I'd like to call to order Monday, March sixteenth, twenty fifteen Richmond City School Board Meeting.
Will the board members or president please respond? Mr. Sternman?
Here.
Mr. Gray, I'm sorry, Ms. Gray, Mr. Boone?
Here.
Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Present.
Dr. Jones? He is here. Mrs. Pinkney Adams, Mrs. Larson?
Yeah.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
Mr. Chid? And we have been joined by our student Michael Bob Stelton. The next item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
Our student lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
The next item is the adoption of the agenda and I do that.
Is anyone who needs translation services tonight? No further sir.
Si alguien habla español y necesita intérprete, por favor levanta la mano. No para ir, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Boone?
The next item is item one point zero four, the adoption of the agenda. We need to remove item seven point zero two, which is receiving an update from the Career Technical Education Commission. And on item eight point zero three, add enrichment alternative schools, so it's received for action on an alternative accreditation plan for a ministry and Richmond Alternative Schools. Any other changes?
Mr. Vaughan?
Mr. Chair, without objection, I've emailed, I think earlier this week, several weeks ago, I emailed some questions regarding the middle school bell schedule, the changes that we made, asked some questions about how they impacted us over the school year. And so, I'd like, if the administration is ready or prepared to discuss those responses that they sent us in a Friday report, that that item be also added to the agenda.
Okay, Dr. Bennett, are you all prepared to do that tonight?
So we are adding an update on the bell schedule. Motion is made by Mr. Sternman to Dr. Green, who is your second. Motion is made by Mr. Sternman, seconded by Mr. Moon, on the favor of Dr. The Agenda as amended. Any abstentions, any opposed? The agenda has been approved. The next item on the agenda is item two, our recognitions. As your name is called, we do ask that you come forward to receive your recognition. And if we have parents, family members, teachers or principals in the audience, will they stand and be recognized? Our first recognition goes to Zachary Wenzel. He's a fifth grade student at Lindwood Olton Elementary School, and he is the Richmond Public Schools spelling bee champion.
Zachary, on behalf of the school board and administration of the city of Richmond Public Schools, I want to present you with the citywide spelling bee champion. A recent twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen Richmond Public Schools. Zachary Wenzel, Olden Elementary School, fifth grade. Congratulations.
The next recognition goes to Shimmerwazo Elementary School. The staff of Shimmerwazo present to come forward, please. And they are being recognized for the successful implementation of the elementary IB program.
And the staff of the school take our opportunity to say congratulations. For successfully competing with is a multi-year process of preparing our students to be a whole school, we have access to whole school international backboard program. It is a rigorous process that you go through an outside review. You have to both have a financial commitment as well as certain threshold you must meet to receive approval. This is also another example of continuous improvement process because they will have to get renewed to recycle and get visits to make sure that they are adhering to the guidelines of international backboard program. Certificate reads, "School Board of the City of Richmond, Certificate of Recognition. This award is presented to Shimmerwazo Elementary School for a successful implementation of the elementary IB program." So congratulations, and we look forward to the great things you're going to expose to students during next year. Thank you.
Mr. Lovelace, after you take a picture there, can you have them turn around? Thank you.
The last recognition this evening goes to the two thousand fifteen R E B award winner, Ms. Kowana Yates, Principal of George Washington Carver Elementary School.
Dr. Currie, as my standing, I had the selection process, so Dr. Currie, could you share a little word to what the committee said about our most respected member?
Yes, it gives me great pleasure to be here honoring Mrs. Yates. The selection committee was just so very impressed with her. The way she has transformed Carver Elementary School since she has been a principal there. The way her students have continued to make progress. And the passion that she brought and brings to Carver. And the passion that she displayed and the enthusiasm for her work that she displayed with the selection committee. They were just totally impressed. And she was a phenomenal representative for Richmond Public Schools. So congratulations, and Dr. Bennett, you would have been so very, very proud.
This process is a panel of superintendents, or they're designated throughout the RBA region. So this is a competition, the leadership within the region that our very own, and we have had success since I've been here the last couple of years and probably more than that. So I think it's a testament that we do have quality leadership within our schools. And thank you for representing us well. The certificate reads, "School Board of the City of Richmond, Certificate of Recognition. This R E B award is presented to Ms. Kowana Yates, Principal, George Washington Carver Elementary School for distinguished educational leadership." Congratulations.
Hey, Dr. Boone?
The next item, Mr. Chair, is to recess your meeting and convene a public hearing on the Metropolitan Preparatory Academy Charter School.
All right, this time for the public hearing, board members, we want to make sure again that our public here is informed. If you are here to speak during the public hearing, would you be way back, please? Speaking during the public hearing for the charter school? Okay. At this time, we're going to allow representative of the charter school to just make some brief comments about what you're doing at this point. I think we need a full presentation, but if you can make some comments. Okay, once again, people are here to speak during the public hearing. One, two. All right, okay. All right, so we're going to move down. We've seen the presentation, correct?
Yes.
Presentation we've seen? All right, okay. We'll give that opportunity. All right. Yep, she's going to do her presentation. She says you guys already loaded it up for her?
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Bennett, Assistant Superintendent Crans, other members of the RPS administration.
His name?
Thanks, Camus.
Good evening, Dr. Bennett. Superintendent Crans, Assistant Superintendent Crans, other members of the RPS administration, Chairman Ford Colton, Vice Chair Larson, other members of the RPS board, teachers, students, parents, and other community stakeholders, welcome. I'm Charlie Denga, a native of Richmond, a product of Richmond Public Schools system. I went to Carver Elementary School and to Graves Middle School and then to Richmond Community High School. I'm also one of the founders of Richmond Urban Collective, the local nonprofit, and developer of Metropolitan Preparatory Academy, which is a prospective charter school for Richmond. Metropolitan Preparatory Academy would be an open enrollment middle high school for boys, tuition free. It would open, it would be college career preparatory, would open with one hundred boys in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. There are several key features of the program. First is more time in school. Our boys would have eleven quarter hours school day and would also have compulsory summer school, five weeks. Program would also have a global focus. Second discussion feature, for example, a core part of our social studies program would be the World Peace Game, which was developed by one of my former high school teachers. We were getting digs for the game. It's essentially a life-size game, board game, political simulation for students, interactive game. Another key feature would be the peaceable school. The peaceable school is essentially creative conflict training. Our boys would learn how to solve problems creatively. We would also be a full-service school. We would provide intense wraparound services for our boys. I grew up as an average person in many public schools, and I understand that there are, no matter how hard you work at school, no matter how hard our teachers work, there are things that happen outside of school that we need help with to help us make better grades. So a lot of effort into being a full-service, body wraparound service. A good key feature is that we would be a technology-infused school. We want to put the data about student performance at our teachers and administrators fingertips, so we've chosen a data management and storage solution that can help our teachers have access to student performance data and make instructional decisions, instructional strategies. Our program has a couple foundational pillars, the categorical model does. And one of those is our acceleration plan. We have chosen, expecting that between, actually probably around ninety percent of our boys would come in operating one, two, three grade levels behind. We have selected computer, a couple of computer-based solutions for English and math that would, that are both do the same similar things. They build cognitive readiness, and then they increase comprehensively skills. And then there's a comprehensive content. With this acceleration plan, we expect that we'll be able to have about seventy-five percent of our boys on par during segment three. The second pillar of our program is active learning. We are planning to, for boys to learn by doing, learn through doing. Active learning, of course, we will still have lecture in the classroom, teachers must lecture. But our boys will spend a lot of time, we'll spend a lot of time in debates, case studies, field trips, experiments, reciprocal teaching, skits, that kind of thing. Our team is a really strong team, we're very fortunate, there are twenty of us, including the, our board of directors and our board of advisors. And together collectively, we have six centers of experience in education, business, the arts, medicine, anything you may name it. Our budget is very basic. The key thing here for our community singles to understand is that the management company or the management entity will be on top. And so the governing board will be part of the nonprofit entity. And so, as you see, there's no bottom line. So we would, all the dollars go into classrooms, basically, and there's no management being paid. There aren't some charter situations, but there's management to a management company. The RPS charter community, which is made up of members of the administration, members of the board, and members of the community, have reviewed our charter application. And out of the twenty-six parts of the application, they passed us on twenty-five of them. The item that was still outstanding was facility. And so, to get approval, that was the hurdle that we needed to jump, to get a recommendation, I'm sorry, recommendation. So that's sort of. And this is a summary of, in the event that we work with by the RPS board, this is a sort of highlights from our timetable. We would, in quarter one and quarter two of this year, one of the highlights would be the continuous face search and grant writing and solicitation act for fundraising. In quarter three and quarter four of this year, a highlight would be that we would finalize the school site and finalize student lottery and application. And highlights from first quarter twenty sixteen is that we would be doing school renovation during that time and also hiring headmaster and staff. Thank you very much for your time, and I'll be around for your questions.
All right, thank you. At this time, those who would like to speak during the public hearing for the proposed Metropolitan Preparatory Academy Charter School, if you would line up to my right.
Mr. Chair, as you're lining up at the regular place, we've been joined by Mrs. Taylor and Mrs. Pinkney Adams.
Okay. All right, once again, everyone who would like to speak regarding the proposed Metropolitan Preparatory Academy Charter School, if you could line up to my right. And each speaker will have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Tom Hartman, and I stand here this evening to speak in favor. I know we have a lot of exciting, ambitious initiatives underway. We have to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time. Even if we are ambitiously walking, we have to be ambitiously chewing gum. I think this is a very persuasive initiative. I urge the board to a conditional approval. The condition being the finding of a facility and any other conditions that the board might find relevant. I urge you not to deep six the proposal at this time. Thought I have, it's not been very long ago, that the governor's school was housed at Thomas Jefferson. Is that a possibility? Please give a conditional and enthusiastic tentative endorsement.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sadith Ali. I'm a retired educator from Hartford, Connecticut. I served the Hartford Public School System for thirty-seven years. My family and I have recently relocated to North Chesterfield, Virginia. Currently, I'm teaching language arts, and I'm also the rites and passage, male rites and passage instructor at Tohine Prep School. I also, my focuses are also being an author, primarily focusing on educating young African-American males. And I intend to do some charity in the near future, particularly prison system, and continue my writings as well. I'm in complete support of having an all-male academy. In the year nineteen ninety-five, I established one of the only existing all-male academies in the public school system throughout the country known as the Benjamin May's Institute. And this was the end of the year nineteen ninety-five, serving seventh and eighth graders throughout the city of Hartford, Connecticut. And what inspired me to establish such is what I'm seeing in Richmond today. I notice a tremendous amount of unfortunate poverty, low academic achievement amongst our young men, and unfortunately incarceration. I created a saying, or quote, whatever you want to call it, I share with my friends who are educators as well. I firmly believe that poverty and illiteracy, poverty and illiteracy go hand in hand, they marry. And they produce a baby called incarceration. And we see so many of our young men incarcerated primarily in unfortunate and impoverished conditions because they lack substantial education. This all-male academy, Metropolitan, will dissolve that. It'll dissolve that, it will produce intelligent, not only intelligent young men, but also highly moralistic men and men who will serve as leaders. Yes, leaders and their communities. Not only will they flourish, but they will allow for their communities, their communities to flourish as well. I'll try to speed it up. They'll allow for their communities to flourish as well by serving as potential tutors, going into the schools, serving as tutors, mentors, grooming them to be teachers. Actually, I've seen this occur. So to make my comments short, please, please folks, please support this extremely, extremely important endeavor. All right, this is a state of emergency for our young men. You know, I thought I got away from it when I came down here, but unfortunately, it exists throughout the country. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Rodney Thomas. I'm here speaking outside of my normal working role. First of all, to the gentleman just mentioned how he founded Benjamin Bannaker. Benjamin Bannaker has become a symbol for what they use charter schools in the city of New York, special academic schools for males because of the success that Benjamin Bannaker Academy had. I'm speaking on behalf of Metropolitan Prep because it is a program that is needed. There is some young men that you cannot mainstream. There are some young men that you cannot mainstream into the regular public school system. They need to be in an all-male situation for learning, for athletics, just for everyday existence. There are too many of our young black men, in fact, there are too many of our young men, period, that are spending time down on Oliver Hill Way because of, they're not getting the attention that they need, the attention they deserve. I would strongly suggest that you support the Metropolitan Prep Academy. I understand one of their biggest problems is that presently, they don't have a facility. Just to let you know, there are six other states in this country that have charter school programs that allow tentative approval of the program while the organization is still trying to find a feasible location to do what they're doing. Please don't let the fact that they don't have a facility at this moment in place hinder you from approving this program. If we're serious about providing the best educational opportunity for young males, please move forward with Metropolitan Prep. Please give them a tentative approval upon them, a tentative approval while they try to locate a facility to operate out of. Thank you.
If there is anyone else who would like to speak to propose Metropolitan Prepatory Before you speak, sir, I'm going to say, this will be our final opportunity. If you are going to speak, it's to be in line at this point. Thank you very much. All right. You, you're fine, sir. You're good, yeah, come on, yeah. She's the last one at this time.
All right. I am, my name is John Hail Taylor III. I'm a Richmond resident, an attorney, practicing law in Richmond for thirty-five years, a product of the Richmond Public School System. And I hesitated to come up and speak only because I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Metropolitan Prepatory Academy. Obviously, I would urge the school board to pass it on a conditional basis. I would like to highlight several things. Most importantly, the Virginia Department of Education has approved the application and sent it to Richmond, which means we've crossed Ts and we've dotted Is. As Tonya has represented to the board tonight, in addition to that, the Charter School Committee, which we met, well, I believe it was back in late October or early November, asked a series of questions and we addressed all of the questions. We feel very good about having passed twenty-five or the twenty-six requirements in the application with approval. The only requirement being the facility. We believe that if we get a conditional approval, then that would give us the opportunity. The speakers prior to me have indicated the benefits of allowing a conditional approval. It will, of course, allow us to go and solicit funds with people knowing in the back that we will be in business or we'll be in the educational business in the following year. It also speaks volume to our ability to bring people in and really be able to educate them on what we're offering. This five-minute presentation today really doesn't, I want to say, do justice. We could have had a longer presentation, but the substance of what we're doing is contained in the application. I'm sure all of you, if you have not reviewed, have been given something from the Charter Review Committee to say how well that application was. We stand by the application for the, for the content of what we want to give kids. I was raised in Churchill. I am a public, a graduate of Armstrong High School. I know as a young man, my business is in Churchill for thirty-five years.
Thirty seconds.
The importance of having an alternative education. We can't cookie-cutter, so to speak, an educational opportunity. This Metropolitan Prep Academy time has come now, and I would urge the school board to pass it at this time. Thank you for your attention.
Hello. My name is Velma Harrison. I'm a first-year teacher in Richmond Public Schools. And just seeing all of the comments and some of the information, I think I just speak in favor of it. I think it's a very beautiful thing, just to, like, I, I work with second graders and I noticed that, you know, there are obviously different learning styles and just to provide different opportunities for them. She spoke about debates and experiments and things like that. And just to really activate the higher, like, higher-level thinking skills is so important. And they, they're only looking for a facility, I don't think that's much, you know? So I just speak in favor of it. And another thing that I wanted to mention, too, is, one thing that I noticed is that zoning keeps a lot of kids from being able to go to some of the schools, like the magnet schools or the other schools. So I think this will provide an opportunity for students who live in different areas of the, of the community and the city. It will allow them to, like, get to that type of education. So, thank you.
Okay, we'd like to thank everyone who came out to speak to the proposed Metropolitan Prepatory Academy Charter School. This time, we will adjourn this public hearing. We will now reconvene with our public information.
Mr. Coleman.
Ms. Epps. I'd like to make a motion. May I do so at this time?
Yes, Ms. Epps, with your motion in leave, please.
I would like to request that we go ahead and grant this conditional approval of the charter school application with a provision that the finalization of the agreement be contingent on securing a school site, at least by January of 2016, for the 2016-17 school.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Epps, did you notice that we have that on the agenda?
So do I make the motion then?
Okay, that's been brought to my attention. That has been moved then, second. Discussion. Mr. Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, at the outset, let me thank the folks from Metropolitan Prep for all the work that they've done to get to this point. I think it, it is beyond noble when a group of people from the community come together and want to do something like start a school with this purpose in mind and with this scope. I think those of us that have been involved in these issues know that there's a lot of research out there that suggests that single-sex learning environments have a tremendous amount of benefits to them. In fact, I think at one point several years ago, this was piloted at Henderson Middle School. Okay, okay. It's just I love Northside. But having said that, and, and I'll say at the outset, I support the scope, I support the, the purpose of Metropolitan Prep Academy, but I'm, I'm still not sure that the time is right for a couple of very significant reasons. One, I think they've highlighted that they're not running from, which is, which is laudable in and of itself, is that there's not a facility in which to house the, the school. Two, I think, given the fiscal realities that we're facing here in Richmond Public Schools, a conditional approval of roughly a million-dollar expenditure is significant. And I think at this point in time, would be, in my estimation, irresponsible of us to take on that potential liability when we may not have enough funding to do things that we've all approved, such as implement the new Bedford model that we're, we're so excited about, or hire additional ESL or DLL staff, resources, to help address some of the issues that we've faced in, in our schools with a growing Hispanic population. So if there is a way to support them, give them a formal vote of confidence without conditionally approving anything so that they can go and raise money, that would be something that I would, I would be interested in. But as far as a conditional approval for a school right now, without the building, without strong fiscal, financial models, and given our fiscal uncertainties and realities that we face here today, I, I unfortunately cannot support a conditional.
Ms. Mahmon?
Yes, thank you. I just have a couple of things that concern me. It, it appears that, and this is just my professional opinion, that we have several charter schools already in our district, one who has struggled in terms of accreditation and students meeting the benchmark, and we continue to financially support it, we continually to provide instructional leadership into that charter school. And since we have, since this board has been in place, there has been numerous instances where it, excuse me, academically, it led me to believe that the Patrick Henry Charter School was in jeopardy academically, but we continue to support it. This is a program that is going to provide our African-American males another opportunity to be successful in this country. I cannot see conditionally or not why anyone would want to block such an opportunity for a group of young individuals who statistically do not make it well for whatever reason. I'm not concerned, I, I have some heartburn about the conditional piece, however, this board knew that we had a charter school that was struggling in so many different areas. I, for one, stated that vehemently a couple of years ago, that I'm extending the charter for whatever reason, when they're still struggling academically and financially, but the board voted the other way, and that's okay. I am not going to stand in the way of an opportunity for African-American males to be successful under no circumstance. So this is an opportunity for our young men, who for whatever reason is not succeeding in the traditional setting, to provide a non-traditional setting for them to be successful. So, yes, I have some heartburn about the facility, but if the Virginia Department of Education, who we appear to look to for other things, has said that they have twenty-five bullets in place, then I am willing to support it.
Ms. Epps, followed by Mr. Larson.
A point of clarification, I guess. The one million dollars that was in the original budget, with this conditional approval, are we putting that one million back?
When, if, again, if we approve it, then we have to provide money to move it forward. At this point, what's been asked is for the next, opening in the next fiscal year, is that correct? Yes.
And so if it's for the next fiscal year, would we not visit the funding during the next budget cycle?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Larson.
I also appreciate the, the energy of this group. I believe in the school choice. I wish we had had some parents here tonight, because I would have really loved to hear from parents who would think that this would be a good option for their child, because a charter is a choice and children are not zoned for it. So if you don't get students to apply, then there's no point in having the school. I, I went over and I read the motion that Ms. Epps put forward. I have some other conditions that I would like to add. So Ms. Epps, I don't know if you want me to read them, if you're open to a friendly amendment, or I should put something separate forward?
I'm open to a friendly amendment.
Okay. It reads as, "RPS School Board conditionally approves moving forward with executing a charter agreement for Metropolitan Prep Academy for the 2016-17 school year. If, one, by August 3, 2015, the school will secure a sufficient school facility as evidenced by submitting a lease or purchase agreement to RPS Board. The facility, if not within the RPS school system, must comply with all public school requirements. If the facility is an RPS facility, the Charter Board must submit a reasonable timeline for renovations and evidence of financial backing to make those renovations. Two, by March 1, 2016, the school has sufficient evidence of students enrolled within a plus or minus ten percent goal of the first year of operation. Three, by August 3, 2015, a detailed plan and finances for executing exceptional education services. And four, by August 3, 2015, a detailed plan and supporting financials on transportation. Three, by August 3, 2015, a detailed plan and, and finances for executing exceptional education services. Four, by August 3, 2015, a detailed plan and finances on transportation." And Ms. Lewis, I can give you a copy of this.
Ms. Epps?
I have one question. Were those the same requirements we had for our first charter? Did we put them, as I'm aware, our first charter was not able to actually go into the building, they had to actually use a church. And as I understand, I'm not sure that there was any opportunity for the first charter school to have already secured, to have already had a lottery where they knew the number of students that were going to come. So I, without knowing that information, I'm not open to this friendly amendment. It'd have to be a separate amendment.
Ms. Coleman.
All right. So is that a motion to amend? Ms. Larson.
Yes. She said she wasn't accepting the friendly amendment.
That's correct. Ms. Lilian, you can speak into the mic, please.
If it was not a friendly amendment, then it's subject still to a motion to amend.
Okay.
And second.
I have a question about the amendment, Mr. Coleman.
Mr. Stern. There's the window second. Would that help you decide if you want to second? All right?
I have a question about it, too.
Let's, let's hear Mr. Stern's question. Go ahead, Mr. Stern.
My question, question is going to be, have these conditions been shared with the Metro Prep folks? And I'd be curious if they have input on the feasibility of these conditions.
Yes, quickly, please.
Thank you, Glenn, for the question. Thank you for considering the contingency and everyone else for considering the contingency. We haven't heard the amendments or the amended first motion previously, so could you please repeat the substance? repeat the substance of the first part of that? I was a little confused about, does everyone understand that we are proposing, as teaching suggested in the first motion, the, and as I know at least Lynn and Dawn know, that we're focused on the 2016-2017 opening now?
Yes.
Okay, so now what is your, okay, so now, given that...
Okay, Ms., at that point, we urge you, and we're going to go with the motion, and she can restate it, because you don't have any issue with this now. This is a board action. I just wanted to know, had you heard about it? You haven't? Thank you very much, okay? Thank you.
Well, I guess my, the second part of my question was, can we share it with them now? Find out if they consider them to be reasonable conditions, and then to be better informed on either the amendment or the original motion.
First of all, let me just try to help us here. I'm trying to work with everybody, all right? Let's try to get clear on where we are at this point. There was never a second to the motion. I thought you wanted clarity on the motion.
Yeah, that's right.
There was never a second to the motion, so therefore, that's where we are. And I'm going to give Ms. Larson another opportunity, okay? Because she tried to put forward a friendly amendment that was rejected, so now give her an opportunity to put forward the motion. Okay? You want to restate what you were trying to do?
Well, I have a, just a clarifying question for legal. So I believe, and this is why I wanted to make it a friendly amendment, because I believe it's in conflict somewhat with the original amendment. So I think instead of moving forward with it as a formal amendment, because then it would be in conflict with the original, that I just need to pull back on it and put it forward separately if, and see what happens.
If that's your pleasure, then that's fine, if it is inconsistent.
Okay.
So there's...
Do people want to hear it again?
There's a motion on the floor, excuse me, Ms. Epps, but it doesn't sound like we're going to amend it through this question.
Okay.
So the original motion is still on the floor. Madam Clerk, could you read to us? Okay, now, just get her, okay? Go ahead and restate it so I can hear, so they can be clear what we're talking about.
Mrs. Pinkney Epps' motion is to grant conditional approval of the Metropolitan Prep Academy Charter School, intention of funding, finding, I'm sorry, allocation by January 2016 to open in the 2016-2017 school year, and it was seconded by Ms. Harris Muhammad.
Okay, discussion continues. Dr. Jones, followed by Ms. Bray.
I just wanted to clarify that we're not, Metropolitan understands the motion, and this is what we're asking for, we're to explore the time, so we wouldn't be talking about this.
That's correct.
One of the concerns that I had in the presentation the first time, not the lack of the facilities, but I didn't feel like I got a clear answer on how the money was flowing behind us. And I think that it's critical that even if we find a facility, I think it's critical for us to have confidence that, you know, the necessary financial backing is there for Metropolitan to do its part, so we can do our part. And so I'm hoping to support a community amendment, not just the facility, but it's also the money. And I have seen to date that there is enthusiasm and funding for a trend that shows that if we do an unofficial approval, that this thing is going to pick up and start to grow. So in addition, I can support this, but in addition to the facility, my question mark is important.
Ms. Gray.
Just a couple of comments. The facility issue stood out as one of the top things, but there are several other things that stood out to me from the previous presentation. The fiscal piece that Dr. Jones addressed, no significant fundraising to date, which, you know, lends to the measure of support. And, you know, even if it were fundraising in number, not amount, that would speak to the level of support. The special education services, I think a lot of the assumptions, and I don't know that 25-point approval that came from DOE, but a lot of the assumptions are that we're going to take this one as a district, the special education services, the food services, the transportation services. And I think as a fiduciary of the district, I think it's important to understand what that means, in addition to the million-dollar commitment, what additional commitments we're making in approving this plan. And the other thing that also concerned me was the 11 and a quarter hour day, that didn't seem to have a real plan for how to compensate staff, what the hours would be. It sounded as if there's going to be some kind of volunteer component to it, but that seemed a little unclear as well, and I didn't know if there were any MOUs or commitments from VCU or wherever you're planning to get these evening volunteers. It seems quite a lot to try to take on, and I don't see where there's any strong agreements or commitments in place from the supports in the community that would be needed. So at this point, you know, conceptually, I like the idea of single gender education, especially at the middle school level. I think it's something that this board should examine within the district, but I cannot support this level of commitment at this stage for a charter.
Assistant Lieutenant Miss Khan?
I just want to say to the board that whatever you decide here tonight, you need to make sure that you roll whatever decision is here tonight into your larger context of your rightsizing issue, because this application actually will have a direct impact on that process and that conversation. In fact, if you remember, the fiscal expectation from the city is that we address the 9,000 empty seats as part of the funding issue that they have a concern about. So you just need to make sure you factor that into the conversation, whatever society here tonight, especially as part of the conversation in the first meeting tomorrow, depending on what you decide here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I support Metro Prep and support this motion. I recall Patrick Henry, our charter elementary school, needed a long-term lease before they could do some fundraising and take out loans in order to do some work on the building. I think the same principle applies here. We need to show some level of support and approval of Metro Prep so that they can go out and do that fundraising, build those bridges, and get those commitments. But I think we need to show that level of support in order to help them do that. Metro Prep has been around since most of us were on the board. I remember, recall them reaching out to us back in 2012. So I think this is a, I think it's a good curriculum and model of a school. I think, my hope is that it will be successful, but the fact that it is something that's growing from grassroots, from the bottom up rather than the top down, is something that is unique. And because we have so many challenges at the middle school level in Richmond Public Schools, if we can, like one of the speakers said, walk and chew gum at the same time and offer another middle school option for Richmond families, that's a good thing, it's something that we need to do, because we need to, that's where we face a lot of our biggest challenges, and where we need to focus a lot of our swat about supporting this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ms. Larson?
Board members, I did email what I said to everybody. You want to take a look at it? I, again, I support this. I can't vote for the motion that's on the floor right now. If there's an opportunity for me to put forward the motion I mentioned, I read earlier, I will do that, and I hope to have the support of my colleagues. I, there were many conditions that were put on Patrick Henry when they opened. I think that what I wrote down and what I read is a framework for a couple key areas that I think need a little work, and I think it would be helpful for you to have that guidance, as well as for us, to help you zero in on those areas. And so, right now, that's what I can support. It needs to be in the motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Stern, your time is swiftly moving away, sir.
Seven seconds.
Go ahead.
I've seen things where we need a broad coalition of support have challenges, when we don't have that broad coalition of support. So I guess I would appeal to my colleagues that if we can share these proposed conditions with Metro Prep's board and then get their thoughts on the reasonableness of them, we may be able to have a broader coalition of support to help foster the success of this charter school over the long term. Ms. Epps?
Just a second.
Ms. Larson, is that something to be able to share with them so they can take a look at here tonight? Ms. Larson?
So are you suggesting that we put this off to another meeting?
No, no, no. Yeah. What I'm suggesting is email it to Tanya right now, and they can look at it and get a sense of...
And we vote on it when it's on the agenda?
I'm offering, I'm proposing that to my colleagues on the other side of the room to see if that's something that might be reasonable, so that we have the broadest coalition of support possible to ensure the success of this thing.
Okay, so what I can put forward is a five-minute recess. The challenge with that, Mr. Stern, is that we are in the middle of a motion, and no one has called for the question. Okay, Ms. Muhammad?
Question, I call for the question.
Okay. End discussion, second. That's correct.
It was seconded by Mr. Taylor. Mr. Stern?
There was a question by Ms. Epps before you, the voting started.
Ms. Epps had a question before.
So do I need to pull back or call for the question? Because I was turning to the right, I didn't notice yet. She has a question.
As I understand, I may have jumped the gun, that only, we had this opportunity later on the agenda to have this vote, so having that information, I'd like to withdraw the motion at this point.
Okay. Procedurally, just as a point of clarity, Ms. Harris Muhammad called the questions to end the debate. Are you willing to withdraw that motion to end the debate?
If she still had a question, that was a little bit...
Okay. And so are you now withdrawing your, the original motion, or are you tabling that until later?
I'm tabling it until where it is properly on the agenda.
Okay. And so is there a second for the tabling of that discussion?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Pinkney Epps is tabling her motion, and it was seconded by Mr. Stern.
You are adding until, are you tabling this until later? It's the appropriate time on the agenda.
Until appropriate time. And it was seconded by Mr. Stern. Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Now, this is the table...
To table the motion.
Yes.
Ms. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Harris Muhammad?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
Yes.
And Mrs. Taylor? And the motion has been...
Colleagues, at this point, we're going to move into the public information. I'm going to give you all advance notice. After public information, we will take a five-minute recess. We have an extensive agenda, and we're going to need to plow through it, so please carry yourselves accordingly. This time, Madam Clerk?
Excuse me. We'll come back.
Okay, Ms. Taylor.
I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate the George Wood High School basketball team. It was my hope that we would be able to acknowledge them, but because it's been such short notice with them just winning last week, and we haven't had the opportunity to place them on the agenda, but I do anticipate that we will be recognizing those basketball players at our April, our first meeting in April. So I just wanted to, again, just give my congratulations to the fifth district George Wood High School Bulldogs on such a wonderful job they've done on the basketball court, and especially the academic requirements that we have put in place for them to be able to receive such an accomplishment. Just kudos all the way around. Kudos to the Bulldogs.
Let's give the Bulldogs a round of applause. All right, thank you, Madam Clerk.
The next item is public information. If we don't have anyone who signed up in advance, what is your question, Mr. Chairman?
Anyone who'd like to address the board tonight, you please line up to my right. I will be only giving one opportunity, so if you want to speak to us tonight, you need to be in line. Our security officer will end that line, because we are now running behind. Is there anyone? Okay, sir, you will be the first one to come, sir. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Rodrick Bullock. I came before you back in December in reference to I had an issue, and that issue still hasn't been addressed. I'm in a lot of pain, I can't keep coming down here trying to get this issue straight. I actually talked to Dr. Bettin on the last day of, before school, I felt on a break, and I haven't heard back from him since. And I just want to get this issue resolved, and I just wish someone would help, and it's becoming redundant. And I just am asking that my phone call be returned, and this issue be taken care of, because I just can't keep coming down for this, so. I talked to Mr. Loos the night after that I came here to address you all, and I haven't, you know, heard anything. So, please, I appeal, I'm sick, I don't have time for you to keep coming down here, and I just would like for my issue to be taken care of. Thank you.
Good evening, School Board Chair Coleman, Vice Chair Larson, Superintendent Bettin, and all of the members of the school board. My name is Charlotte Hare, and I'm currently serving as President of the Richmond Education Association. It is time to change the conversation. We've spent too much time talking about what we want our school system to look like for the children yet to come. It's time for us to talk about and demand what our school system should look like currently for the children that we have in the system. It is time for us, it's time out for being held hostage, the school system being held hostage by the mayor or the city council's unprofessional belief of what professional educators know to be best in the interest of students for the city. We must fight for what our current children need in order to be successful in terms of what the city needs, to understand that our children today require more resources than they once did. And a big part of this is because the city has let them down and left them in poverty. And now the city wants to disperse them by changing their communities to mixed-use housing and means, find somewhere else to live, or find somewhere else to go to school. It's time for us to repair the damages, the damages that have been made and are now here with us. It's time for us to at least give the children what they had back in 2009. It's time to provide facilities that are modern, up-to-date, and are equipped with technology. It's time to address the culture of overtesting, just to prove that students have learned and stop forgetting about the whole child. Richmond kids deserve great public schools, and that means that our children deserve to have a school board to fight for each and every one of them, just like you fought for the 100 children that will be going to the charter school. We need you to put your time and your energy, your finesse, your political will, your clout, into fighting for the children that are currently sitting in our school seats. It's time for you to get off your rusty duffs and take on the challenge of which you've been given, and demand that the children of Richmond get nothing better than a great public school. It's time for us to focus on our children. Most of them do not have a choice. This is it for those children. So, we need you to do what it is that you've been appointed and assigned to do, do for them what it is that you've been elected to do, address the issues that need to be addressed. But most of all, we need you to demonstrate to our children that they deserve great public schools by fighting for them, like no one has ever fought for them, because they demand and they deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Tom Hartman speaking as an individual. Two quick things. Want to thank Mr. Sturdivant for his no vote on the budget. Even though I approve the budget, it's great to have someone ready at the brakes when we're moving forward, threatening to careen around curves, so thank you, sir, although I disagree with your politics. It's good to have you aboard. Secondly, I do want to, I guess, chide the system regarding the new start times. I know the staff at my school is very unhappy with the new nine o'clock start time. The proposal that had been put forward to the public was for elementary schools to start at eight o'clock. We had no idea that nine o'clock was under consideration. You had public hearings, you got the input, and then you decided on a proposal we had not heard, so we had no reason to give input. So, I guess it's a done deal, but please, in the future, give us a full partition of the proposals being considered. Thank you.
My name is Don Coles. Here as a private citizen and as a member of the Better With Bettin Coalition. We want to, first of all, I want to thank the school board for its courage and its creativity in advancing a budget that certainly is challenging to us and to the city. I am mindful that the mayor has a difficult task and much to balance in his own right with many, the city having many needs. However, advocating the needs of the children are critical, so we thank you for that. While we're disappointed in the mayor's proposal, there's still an opportunity for community dialogue. So, our wish is, in request of you, is to continue to inform the community on the implications of alternative budgets, so we can thoughtfully advocate on behalf of the children of Richmond Public Schools. So, thank you for your leadership. Please keep us engaged as citizens, and we look forward to supporting you with big power. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Chairman, I'm Marty Jewell, and I'm representing the Chairman of the NAACP Education Committee. However, I do want to mention that as a member of the Coalition for Quality Education, we fully support your recommended budget to the city, and we will be joining with other parties to fight like the Dickens to get it approved. You deserve full funding if we deserve full productivity in educating our children. What stands so strange to me is that as a percentage of the general fund budget in Henrico, Hanover, Chesterfield, they average roughly 38% of their general fund budget goes to school. Richmond gives half that amount, roughly 17%, yet we want to compete with the county. In the words of Mr. Donald Hatchet, God rest his folks' soul, who continuously would say there's something wrong going on in this town. Well, there's plenty wrong going on in this town. You've got the mayor willing to spend $80 million for a ballpark down in the bottom. You've got $31 million to brew up a beer and a juke joint. You've got $21 million for two years sitting collecting interest for a O.B. Shepherd Elementary School that you have told them you don't want. That's $131 million. Surely, they can fund your request. So, that's our argument, we're going to proceed with it. But now that I've kissed you, I got to kick you, because much of what you do lacks so much logic, that maybe that's why there's some hedging on funding. You did magnificent work your first four months once you came into office. You clearly, you asked for a city, a allow audit. You determined that you were going to replace a former superintendent, and you asked then for full funding. Five months into that administration, that nefarious Plan C was passed and sprung on everybody, and you've been at odds ever since. The problem is that it's being handled, Mr. Coleman, in a very imbalanced way. The minority is being treated like redheaded stepchildren. I hear the complaints, I know of the disrespect, and it's totally unprofessional, unacceptable. And so, we hold you accountable to bring balance and equity and fairness to the proceedings before us here, while we deal with the monumental issues that you've got to deal with on the one end, and a community that has to get bucked up and get behind our school system and do its job. Part of what needs to happen with RPS to be successful is the responsibility of the community. But in the midst of all of the efforts of trying to mobilize that community, you attacking our friends, and we ain't going to have it. Meanwhile, you've got folks being chastised for spending discretionary funds for travel to do professional development. This very week, one of yours is going to go with the corporate big shots to Tennessee to do this much browsing regarding education, when right down the street in the same city, the National Association of School Boards is doing professional development, enhancing the performance of our members. Yet, they get ragged for going to something like that, but nothing is said when your vice chair will go down and hang with the big shots. I didn't call a name. I didn't call a name. I don't need to call a name. You know it, I've talked to you on the phone about it, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping that you can pull this thing together. You can bring balance to this ballgame. As long as grievances are outstanding, there can be no balance. That's all I got to say. We'll be watching.
Good evening, Dr. Bettin, Chairman Coleman, and members of this fine organization. My name is Darryl Badley Jr., and I have the privilege to present to you an opportunity for Richmond Public School children to perform on a national stage with national recording artists in the name of domestic violence awareness. There's a national stage play coming to Richmond in three weeks, and Shannon Ren, the writer and survivor of domestic violence, has opened the opportunity for Richmond Public School kids to actually sing on stage at the Carpenter Center as a way of showing them that we support them, we love them, we know what they're going through, but we want to give them an opportunity to shine, an opportunity to come out of what they're in, even for that brief moment, to be on stage with these superstars. I actually have here today Shannon Ren, who is the writer, the national playwright and writer of the play Bound and Gagged, Bound by Fear, Gagged by Love, and she's actually here in the audience. She came in support of this play, and she came here, she drove and came all the way here just to see here and be here, because she understands the importance that domestic violence and, more importantly, what it does to our kids, how it affects our children, how it affects not even our children but our adults. So, I'm here to you today to open the opportunity. We're looking for 100 to 200 of your singers, middle school and high school singers, to be able to perform on stage with a national superstar, Ty Tribitt, Ann Masby, Tony Grant, also being directed by our local hero, James Johnson, six-time Stella Award nominee, as well as many other local celebrities and local people who are willing to stand by our children. Black Awakening, Mass Choir, VCU, I mean, Virginia State Mass Choir, Virginia Unions, all of them are on board.
Thirty seconds.
My dear friend Shannon Ren asked me to come, and to this point, they're launching their 15-city national tour in Richmond. Ty Tribitt is making his acting debut in Richmond. So, with all that I've heard and all that's been said, we have an opportunity to shine and make ourselves known. Thank you.
Once again, the whole reality of the public information period is to give the public an opportunity to speak to us, and we are grateful that people choose to come and speak to us. We do have clear guidelines about how it should be handled, but I would just continue to encourage our speakers to come and speak to us, but also do your best to discipline yourselves in how you approach us. Okay, colleagues, we took a five-minute recess. Again, we have an extensive agenda. I would encourage you to do whatever you need to do, because when we come back, it's rock and roll. because when we come back, it's rock and roll. Board members, board members, if we could make our way to the, back to the stage, please. Or as a matter of fact, board members, if you could make your way back to the front row. We have a couple of presentations that we're gonna have. Yeah, we, we got some presentations, so let's go ahead to the front row so we can rock and roll here. Hey, can we pause the screen for a second? Just pause it right there, that's good. Just pause it. Till we get everybody out there. Uh, security, if you could go to our little room and make sure everybody is moving this way. That would help me out. All right, colleagues, if we could convene on the front row, please. On the front row, please. We have a presentation on the spot. So yeah, just sit out there. I'll wait till I see five people sitting down, and we'll be convening, okay? Thank you, Ms. F. Okay, we'd like to re-convene the Monday, March 16th, 2015 School Board Meeting. All right. Can we give a hand to our student who needs to exit for his homework? All right, AV, if you could bring the screen down, and Madam Clerk, if you could tell us his next words.
The next items on the agenda are 6.01, receive the results of the Human Resources Audit. That will be followed by 6.02, to receive the financial statements for the month's ending, December 2014, January 2015, and February 2015. And then you will receive, um, the results of the K-12 Community Survey. And I think that may be your last presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair, Dr. Bedden, Board Members. I am Kansas Hundred Chief of Staff, and I'm here this evening to present to you with the Human Resources Audit. Okay, so our topics to be covered tonight are exposed here for you. So we'll talk about the purpose of the audit. Last year in December, the Council of Great City Schools, under the direction of Dr. Bedden, conducted an audit of our HR department. And as you know, we have lots of, um, inefficiencies that could be better with, within our department. So today, we're gonna talk about the purpose of the audit. We'll go through the existing organizational structure, what the budget looks like currently in terms of our makeup. Then we'll review some commendations, the benchmarks, and then go right into the recommendations. So the audit's purpose. Um, the independent review was conducted because our current operating procedures in our system is outdated. Um, the superintendent continues to share that our human capital is one of our most valued assets. However, we have lots of, um, opportunities for improving how we manage our human capital, and then it requires a really strategic vision in how we, how we do that. So what we wanted to do was take a look at the overall leadership. Where are we and how can we be better? To develop a set of recommendations and proposals that achieve greater operational efficiencies and effectiveness, and then provide recommendations that's going to enhance our strategic value for the district. So here's what HR currently looks like. And as you can see, we have quite a few people. There are 18 people within our organization. Um, right now, there's a recommendation for this position, the Employee Relations Coordinator. That's the only position that doesn't currently exist. So our recommendation would provide a model that's more closely integrated in terms of what best practices are for the HR market, which is really to align the compensation area in one department, benefits in one department, recruitment, et cetera. So right now, we have eighteen positions to the tune of about a million and a half dollars. And then you can see employee benefits, what we pay for advertising and communication and our travel. And then our capital outlay, which is really no money right now. So the nineteenth slot would be created to provide the support that our current executive director needs. And we'll talk about that in a few slides. So one of the great things that the Council of Great City Schools found is that we have a hardworking and dedicated staff. And that our principals are really engaged in the teacher recruitment process. Um, recently, we integrated payroll as an automated function. And I talked with the payroll director, and she said, "We're really saving about thirty-seven thousand dollars a year just on that function alone." So you can see how integrating technology into current processes helped to really, um, reduce some of the staff time it takes to get those things done. And improves the efficiency in how we use the people that we currently have. So what the next slide is gonna show is some benchmarks. So the Council of Great City Schools looked at some schools in some other districts nationally, in terms of how they're structured. So as you can see, based on the eighteen positions we have, that were properly structured in terms of bodies. But what we might not have is the technology to support those bodies and how they do the work. So we also looked locally at Norfolk and Spotsylvania. And you can see, we're at the high end of staffing levels. However, if you look at where they are, their positions are across the board. So in terms of the different types of HR functions, they're structured a little differently than us, where we have most of our coordinators and senior associates clustered in one bucket. Also, one of the things that we wanted to share with you is in terms of budgets. When you look at dollars per pupil that other districts are spending. So we look at our competitors and our sister schools, as well as district-wide, how we compare. Rowan Oak City spends a lot of money per pupil under HR compared to all of the other school districts. Richmond is a second, but not very close at all. So this slide starts with the restructure. When you think of HR in a very strategic role, most organizations have it grouped by family function. And what that means is that the compensation area is responsible for compensation, benchmarking positions, classification, pay increases, things like that. And support the recruitment function and making sure that the new employees that we bring onboard, the salary presents internal and external equity. And then we have recruitment and selection. So recruitment and selection spans a whole life cycle of an employee. How do you find them? Where do you find them? For what skills are needed? Making sure that they work very closely with compensation and classification, that job descriptions are accurate and up to date. And then we have the retention. Retention starts on when you bring employee aboard. What onboarding services do we have? How do we develop and promote our people within? And that's everyone from our teachers, to our safety and security officers, to our bus drivers. What's the process? How do people know, how do they function and grow as in an organization? And then the separation function as well. So in terms of getting hired, you have to leave. And sometimes, that exiting a business is in the form of position reduction. And how do you support an employee when they're on their way out? Because it's a holistic model. And then total rewards, benefits, compensation. So right now, our services are very disjointed in terms of physical location. Benefits is located in a totally separate building, in a very dated old school. Um, so they're not with their colleagues. And then we have the position control function, which is housed in HR, but in typical HR organizations, they should function within the finance department. So that's a recommendation, to relocate that function to where it rightly belongs. And then we want to consolidate the benefits unit, which is now being served by the risk management department, HR department, some in finance, it's a very piecemealed effort. And then we want to continue to utilize technologies to improve our effectiveness and reduce redundancies. So in terms of not having the right technologies and not having the right data and the right matrices to figure out what our return, our HR investment dollars are, you really have no opportunity to do that with our current structure. Alright, in terms of, um, one more. Go to Recommendation Management, please. There we go. Management, one more. So in terms of the structure, once you have the structure, the system has to be managed. So as you've noticed in the presentation, professional development is a core factor for success in all that we do. Um, you can plan, but if your team doesn't have the right skills and competencies, nothing's gonna get done. So we don't want to erode the credibility of a good system without providing the training for people to do the work. So we want to establish a system that really functions on forecasting and planning. So how many teachers will we need? Who's retiring? Um, and you can't make people retire, but if you look at your workforce and you know that they're aging, people are gonna come out of the system, you want to plan effectively your pipeline. So your sitting APs, who are, you know, trained, your administrators, who's trained? You want to have all of that in place. So we want to transform, right now, our HR department's very transactional, very heavy paper processing, to a more strategic partner for the district. Um, we want to make sure our skills are aligned to create accountability within our HR team. And we want to develop statistical models and methods and data for decision-making purposes. So that means that we have to have a robust communication plan for HR matters. How do we do things? How do employees find things? When you come onboard, where do you go? Which would include sort of a robust self-service portal that would be helpful for assisting the HR team members to get out of the paper transaction. So now that you have the management, what does leadership do? And that includes the leadership in terms of the executive director, whoever is over that area. That person is really responsible for driving the mission and vision and the direction of how the workers in that area function. So the plans need to be aligned to whatever the district sets as its strategic plan. Right now, I didn't do that. Okay, right now, it's linked to, or would be linked to, our AIP plan. But whatever the strategic vision of the organization is, the HR team should be supporting the people that we bring onboard. The talent that we bring onboard helps to manage and execute that. We want to make sure that our HR staff, the actual people that are in that department, are receiving strategic development for their own personal growth. So what skills and tools are they using to develop their own selves so that they can provide the service? So the model is, if you're providing a service to the teachers and they're happy, the teachers are providing a service to the students and the students are happy. So it's sort of that trickle-down effect. Um, we want to collect and leverage data matrices. So we've started that process in using Teacher Insights and the Gallup process to hire. And we're also been transitioning that to our APs, as well as our principals, and moving into sort of a holistic model for the whole organization. I didn't do that either. Um, and we want to make sure that we're establishing accountability for our HR team. So to the extent that we can make sure that they're, um, they have the tools they need to do what they need to do, and that we're holding them accountable to make sure that they're doing that. Um, and then lastly, we want to talk about operations. I think it's one more. So one of the things that our HR Executive Director does right now is that he runs around, um, in a very, um, in a way that's not conducive to what an executive director should be responsible for. Spending a lot of his time on employee relations issues. And that's one of the things that the Council of Great City Schools recommended, is a strong support to be able to handle that issue. So on a daily basis, he's doing lots and lots of investigations, which leaves little time for him to be strategic and to plan properly and accordingly. So we need to get the entire staff, staff, staffed properly in terms of the right functional areas so that everybody is utilizing the skills to the best of their ability. Um, one of the operational recommendations is to modify existing onboarding process for all employees. So right now, we have onboarding for teachers, which happens in August. But if you're hired outside of a teacher function, there's no onboarding process for you. So, um, one of the big things in HR research literature links onboarding process to retention. So to the extent that your onboarding process is rich and robust, and it gives people a strong sense of the culture, then they're more likely to stay and be fully engaged in their work. Um, so we need to beef up that system for RPS. We want to update our administrative procedures manual and to also make it a virtual process. Most, um, twenty-first century organizations don't really have paper manuals for their administrative procedures. It's an online process, you read it, you come on onboarding process, you're given your employee orientation, you're given key skills and tools to compliance sort of issues right away, and then you have it available to you in a virtual format. Um, want to make sure we update and evaluate our procedures and the instruments we use for performance evaluation. I know we've been going through a two-year long process to, um, improve and update our evaluation models for our principals, but we need to extend that throughout the organization. It can't just be for one classification of employees. Um, again, we want to stress a robust self-service employee portal. And then to streamline the investigative functions, which I talked a little bit about, by hiring a staff person who's skilled to do that work and to support, um, and to support our executive director. Our next steps, really, um, last Friday, we met with the entire HR team to provide an overview of the audit results. When the Council of Great City Schools came, they interviewed every person on the HR team in terms of focus groups. And so it was important for that team to see their ideas and their suggestions and what they shared about what was working well and what needed refinement was reflected in the audit results. And they were pleased that that was there. They expressed some additional concerns to me and Mr. Phillips. And so in terms of what the next steps are, we really need to define the roles and responsibilities for the HR team to match the recommendations of the Council of Great City Schools. And then we want to develop an action plan and an implementation plan to bring back to the board. So this is first just the findings. And then, you know, what do the findings mean in terms of implementation? What would the cost factors be? So in figuring out what they are, we would of course have to come back to the board to present that, to see if we get the support of it, and then move forward with the action. But in the meantime, there are several no-cost things that can be done, which are gonna already be in the works to get this project moving forward. Any questions?
Yes, um, I have a couple, but I'm sorry, but you mentioned that. Do you think that they expressed additional concerns for the two people that the Council of Great City Schools...
No, the HR staff, yes. Yes, so they had questions of, you know, how will it work, you know, what does that mean for me and things like that? But overall, they were engaged in the process and was happy to see what they expressed initially was provided in the feedback.
One more question. Are there any recommendations that require immediate funding in order to make recommendations?
Well, we can continue to operate the way we operate, and that's not the most effective way. So in terms of a dollar figure, I, no, there was not any dollar figure. But there was sort of the urgency in terms of, you can't keep going forward this way, but there's... Yes, the procedural manual. So one of the things, see, there's a couple of things with HRs. You want to make sure that the things that affect complacency, being compliant with federal and local laws relative to employment, you want to make sure those things are available, updated. So to the extent that we want to provide onboarding for all employees, where they would have to sign and acknowledge our sexual harassment training, our, you know, all of those kind of compliance with ADA, compliance with EEO, COCR, all of those sort of federal issues, you would want to make sure that your organization has the tools to be compliant with those issues. And I don't think that there could be some backhand compliance that it's out there somewhere. But if you were to receive sort of a complaint, and then you say, "Show me the manual, show me when you showed it to your employees," and you can't do that, then you would be liable. So those things may not be a high-dollar-figure implementation, but they do require some monies. And we have put a budgeted line item to address that.
One more question. The relocation position control, that, yeah, and additional services, is there?
In terms of Mr. West Bay's area? Yes.
In what way?
Um, I don't particularly know, but some way.
Well, the relocation, um, position control impact your department's overall speed and weight itself? It's like, uh, how does it impact your performance?
And as a follow-up, Mr., um, Ms. Harris Mahoney, as a follow-up. I had mentioned it a couple of times, but the employee relations position, that was one of the immediate... No, that's a separate one.
That's a separate one, that's a little smaller.
Right.
It's actually one of the things that's possible to do.
Right, so...
When you're staying at work.
Because you can't get to all the cases at once, or quickly enough. So that one actually, the addition of that position would actually be able to save us money and to reduce other operational inefficiencies. Because you have an executive director being paid an executive director's salary doing sort of a specialist generalist role. And not functioning at the level he's hired to work at. It's, you know, several pages you can't present here. So, oh, are you... So one of the things that you will find in older HR departments that are outdated or have systems, human resource information systems, or HR systems that are homegrown or outdated, is that it requires more human bodies and physical bodies to do the work. So there was no recommendation in terms of reduction of positions. Again, the more technology and resources you have, the possibility that human interaction could be reduced. I'm not advocating for anybody's position to go away, but, you know, to the extent that we can leverage that with more money for resources, it's something to consider for sure. I mean, to the extent that you have the people there and somebody is trained, maybe we transfer one of the people to Mr. West Bay's area. But again, you would have to, you wouldn't be able to do... But again, you would have to, you wouldn't be able to do that without correcting the issues that are structurally not right with the unit, because then you would create more of a problem than solving what the audit was meant to do.
And perhaps I should wait to turn to our seats, but like for us to consider motion in regard to presentation. Do you like the unit? This is, this is... Additional limitations, you know, from that.
Well, maybe just, you know, with this, I'm considering that making motion to be a state, the HR committee, as opposed to the new resolution, as you all were aware. This is some of the things that the HR committee had pointed out very early on, and should now be taken. And to act on that, I think that it may prove us all, if like with our facilities committee, we have at least two members on this board who are part of ensuring that, well, not necessarily ensuring, but being there side by side with the administration to kind of look at, okay, so what is best for the HR department?
Is that considered as, does it actually want to be... Most of the...
Could we commit to place on the agenda for April 13?
Yes.
So that's... Yes, it doesn't... It's not... I guess, yeah, sometimes they... Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon. So we're still on the next item. Hopefully, we've got any prior advice, and see which one next time makes it out of our problem.
Another presentation, this one?
Obviously, presentation on the... I'm actually... And, uh, we don't have one.
Yeah, I have the, so of course, when I was at my back.
It is. We're not going to project anything for that.
Oh.
Are we doing six, eight, two now?
So I guess, let me make this into a question, so if I can just say, we need to go beyond financial, all of that, because considering...
You're going out there.
Was there not a full of you?
You have the December, January, and February financial statements, and we're about two weeks away from having our final enrollment numbers from March 31. We pointed out in October that we've got some challenge areas that we're going to need to address. We're still working on a plan for those. And with the year-end projection, we've got a good start on that. We'll factor in the final revenue picture with enrollment as of March 31 and at the April work session, and we'll give you the final, the year-end projection, which is looking like it's going to be pretty close this year. So, um, other than that, I don't have any other comments, unless you have specific questions about the reports. Thank you.
As you know, one of the things that we started last year was using K-12 Insight as part of our community engagement. And so they did a community engagement survey that included responses from teachers, parents, and community members. As they prepare to come up and need to bring it up, you know, they will be also conducting a separate one later this year, that's just strictly about student feedback on the district as part of this process that we'll be going through. I will remind you that we're still waiting for dates for the board to get their training to use the Let's Talk feature. We can't implement it, paid for it, but we can't implement it until we get the training audit, and that was part of the package that we picked up from K-12.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Bennet, ladies and gentlemen in the audience. I'm Dr. Futrell, one of the research directors at K-12 Insight, and I'm here to present the results of the Community Perspectives Survey. The voice of the community on issues facing Richmond Public Schools carries significant weight as Dr. Bennet and the school board work towards making informed decisions. This report provides a snapshot of the perceptions of 1862 employees, families, and community RPS leaders administered the Community Perspectives Survey in order to engage current parents, current students, employees, and the community in a conversation about their views of RPS on seven topics: school leadership, climate of high expectations, climate for learning for all, home and community relationships, business and community partnerships, and safe and orderly schools. The survey also asked about school and district facilities. Those results are being reviewed by the RPS Facilities Task Force and will be shared separately. Some details of this particular study. We, K-12 Insight, emailed individual invitations to your parents, employees, community members that included a link specific to their connection to RPS to a survey. Families and community members could also access the survey through a public link on your district's Your Voice page. We sent communications about this survey through email, posters, and the RPS Your Voice webpage. The survey was also available in English, Spanish, and on paper. As a note, a school climate survey was administered to teachers last spring, and this survey invited additional staff members to respond to those similar topics. Seventy-one percent of the teachers who took the survey last time agreed to provide their voice again in this survey. A note to understand the results that I'm about to present for you. They do not reflect a random sampling, therefore they should not be generalized to the entire Richmond employee, family, and community population. Rather, they reflect the perceptions of those who participated in this survey. This survey was open from November 21 through December 31. Your parents and your employees answered questions on topics specific to RPS and their homeschool, while community members answered questions on topics specific to RPS only. You'll note the icons throughout to help you follow who the voices are. The findings for each item in the report only include the participants who answered that question, and in charts and graphs, if it's less than 5%, the numbers are not Regarding participation, of the 1862 participants, 1,571 received an email invitation. 236 participants came to the survey from the Your Voice page, and 52 came from Facebook, while three paper surveys were completed. One survey was submitted in Spanish, and this total that you see, 1,862, includes 43 participants who took an additional shorter version of the survey for more than one child. So regarding your participants, the two dominant response groups were the 900 teachers and the 347 parents and guardians. Of the participants, 237 live within the Richmond region. We then asked those who live in the region how long they were here, and you can see the majority have been in the region for more than 10 years. Okay? The first question gave participants an opportunity to rate the overall perception of the education quality provided by Richmond Public Schools. Fifty-four percent said the quality of the division was excellent or good, while 70% said the education quality provided by their individual schools was excellent or good. Participants were also invited to rate the services and functions of various departments and roles. The ratings of excellent and good range from a high 80% for the role of the superintendent to 52% for facilities. The next set of results are specific to our school climate items. This chart here is the group comparison of the climate items that you will see broken out. The overall group includes parents, teachers, and all school and district-based staff. The first question about school leadership showed that 57% of the participants had an issue or concern to discuss with the school principal, school leader, excuse me, this year. Of those, 78% say their leader was available, and 53% say the leader addressed their concerns. Additional school leadership questions show that 80% say they have a positive professional relationship with their direct supervisor, while only 64% say their director or supervisor has strong leadership skills. A climate for high expectation shows 92% say there is a teacher or counselor or other staff member to whom a student can go to for help with a school problem, while only 60% say the division and state required curriculum and assessments are aligned to support student learning needs. A climate for learning for all, 76% say teachers get timely and helpful feedback, and only 52% say staff members talk positively about students and staff areas. Regarding home and community relationships, 91% say parents and guardians are welcome and encouraged to attend activities, while only 55% say parent and guardian input is used to improve instruction. Regarding your business and community partnerships, 78% say additional business and community partnerships should be added, while 37% say they are satisfied with the number of businesses and community partnerships. Regarding safe and orderly environments, 75% agree that students are safe, while 34% say students do not threaten each other. A continuation of a safe and orderly environment item we asked about the student code of responsible ethics, a strong majority are very familiar or familiar with this. Additional safety question about bullying, 67% say that staff members do not bully students, while only 29% say students do not bully each other. Additional items about safe and orderly environments are your school operations, where 74% say students have access to the internet at school for learning purposes, and 41% say educators have the resources such as textbooks, computers, and visual aids to effectively teach their students. So the next slide will highlight for you 10 survey items based on the percentage of respondents who agree with the statement. The items with the most agreement reflect perceived strengths, while the items with the least agreement are potential opportunities for growth. Items that everyone didn't answer are not included in this. So your strengths, you see 92% say there is a teacher, counselor, or other staff member whom a student can go to for help with a school problem, and only 34% say students do not threaten each other. The next group of items we had were specific to school-level employees about employee relations and support. The first, excuse me, the first group shows 85% say they feel respected and supported by other staff members, and only 60% say the professional development sessions they attended have helped me to better meet the learning needs of students. Regarding employee engagement, 90% say current duties and work assignments are interesting, while only 58% feel comfortable referring a friend to work for this district. Regarding work environment, 80% say their principal or direct supervisor encourages collaboration within and across teams at the school or department, and only 55% say I believe my work is fairly distributed at my school or department. Okay? That concludes the climate results, and based on the highlights shown here, RPS plans the following next steps. First is to compare the survey results with student achievement and discipline data, discuss the results with students, staff, and community to obtain input on into how they might better meet the identified needs, conduct a similar survey with students to understand how perceptions vary by affiliation, and then finally to post the results on the Your Voice page to share with all stakeholders. Thank you.
Remember, this was done, this is not a sample, as you said, this is based on who chose to respond.
Correct. 50% of all responded. There's were teachers. So...
50% of all responded.
Mm-hmm. So out of the 1,862 participants, 900 were teachers.
Okay, so you have...
It's the, it's slide number seven. Thank you.
Okay, so you have... Again, it's based on who chose... I got you, I got you.
Right.
Well, even if you say 900 instructional staff, and you wanted to say, how many of that is our instructional staff, that's still pretty low. Anytime you get over a, was it 20% threshold? Because that is... Yeah, everybody knows what's going on with the... That, that percent is based on how many people respond.
Okay. And then secondly, he said, so along now, she had to go back. Sure.
Was that what I heard when you said that?
Yeah. That is slide number 23. where seventy-four percent say students have access to the internet at school for learning purposes, and forty-one percent say educators have the resources such as textbooks, computers, and visual aids to effectively teach their students. So the next slide will highlight for you ten survey items based on the percentage of respondents who agree with the statement. The items with the most agreement reflect perceived strengths, while the items with the least agreement are potential opportunities for growth. Items that everyone didn't answer are not included in this. So your strengths, you see ninety-two percent say there is a teacher, counselor, or other staff member whom a student can go to for help with a school problem, and only thirty-four percent say students do not threaten each other. The next group of items we had were specific to school-level employees, um, about employee relations and support. The first, excuse me, the first group shows eighty-five percent say they feel respected and supported by other staff members, and only sixty percent say the professional development sessions they've attended have helped me to better meet the learning needs of students. Regarding employee engagement, ninety percent say current duties and work assignments are interesting, while only fifty-eight percent feel comfortable referring a friend to work for this district. Regarding work environment, eighty percent say their principal or direct supervisor encourages collaboration within and across teams at the school or department, and only fifty-five percent say I believe my work is fairly distributed at my school or department. Okay? That concludes the climate results, and based on the highlights shown here, RPS plans the following next steps. First is to compare the survey results with student achievement and discipline data, discuss the results with students, staff, and community to obtain input on into how they might better meet the identified needs, conduct a similar survey with students to understand how perceptions vary by affiliation, and then finally to post the results on the Your Voice page to share with all stakeholders. Thank you. Correct, fifty percent of all respond. There's were teachers. So... Mm-hmm, so out of the eighteen hundred and sixty-two participants, nine hundred were teachers. It's the, it's slide number seven. Thank you.
Again, it's based on who chose.
I got you, I got you. Right.
Well, even if you say nine hundred instructional staff, if you wanted to say, how many of that is our instructional staff? That's still pretty low. Anytime you get over a, was it twenty percent threshold? Because that is... That, that percent is based on how many people respond.
Sure. Yeah. That is slide... Number twenty-three. So the way the survey worked, there were certain items that had the same scale. I'll go back one. So they were items that had the same scale, and of those items that had the same scale, we did an analysis to give you the highest and the lowest. If you remember, there's some items that only, depending on how you answered the preceding item, you were invited to answer that item, such as have you had contact with your school leader? So we didn't ask you to rate the school leader on certain contact questions because you'd said no to that. So those type of questions are not included in this analysis, but the questions that everyone answered, every survey participant was able to answer, are included. Sure, so the question, excuse me, on page thirteen? Twelve, excuse me, I'm going to just slide it. So this pie chart here, there's a yes or no decision tree question. So if you said yes to that, then we asked you these additional questions. But if you said no, we assume you couldn't really give feedback or interaction. So those, those kind of questions would not show up in your ratings at the end of the survey. It was a pleasure.
Is this a...
Yes.
Is there a name?
There'll be a name, PM for sure. So maybe have a PM on the tag.
If, if, and just just a, um, a, um, it would help me to be seeing this information far as the board does try to follow along, that having read or reviewed prior.
The assessments that the V turn around partners are in this year to go to just to see.
We have, we're trying to get a panel on survey, so one of the things we're hoping to do is any survey that has housed, there's a lot of places, you're always going back and get, we also try to publicize the rule of voice to be transparent. We want to kick off a survey of survey. So give a panel, find an institution to put those surveys on. We are still technologically challenged here. My last entry, we stopped that one at a full recall, and we'll watch research evaluation on it, which is a small step by question. Listen and say again, this is something, they're going to have to say no to take care of it through our major protocol, um, for the answer. She asked about the V turn around partners and how they're surveying, are they going to make something?
How they're surveying the school?
Any of their protocol, what they do with survey was.
Yes, yeah, they have, um, for instance, a language called their student quality review assessment, um, so they interview characters, teacher groups, um, student groups, and it's basically all the V turn around partners have that, that, that they do each year. Yes, I think perhaps, um, once I did their assessments, could be maybe measured against what this information shows us.
Thank you, there, look and see there's somewhere, so not be seen what they're doing, uh, don't get. More important too is how we get to make sure we're positive, and the bottom, the two is done. So we can look at it and see what exactly their assessment answers from part of that statement, or a code. Where it's been approved, this part of it, well, how they have to respond to that. So we can look at it and see what do you ask, see if there's any separate questions that you want to say, you know, the same, the same. Adult, like I said, we have a separate student one that we're going to be doing later in spring, um, those, believe, that's all adults. Now we're going to see, like, what does the student say now? What does the student say now? My question to be talking about is how much help you feel like you're getting in school as also, I'm telling you, you get it home. Is there someone that nobody at home, getting home? Is there someone in the community that's with the student? So, so we're going to also really have to question parts of adults, see versus what our kids, also about their school experience.
And just finally, Dr. Ben, in regard to the assessments that, uh, communities and schools and sites what they do, is that now part of our database?
Have a good afternoon. Okay, just I'm wanting, you know, this process and, let me know if you have a question, be able to get, and how to get this, uh, from, from that approach, see if, like, this is turned down, down, this program, teacher inside, and question, they do a student perspective or give a setup, because they're all adults. So we're slowly trying to get our handle. Thank you all so much. Okay, ma'am.
The next item is seven point zero three, receive an update on the mandate of school improvement. Updates.
Good evening. I'll be very brief and summarize about four points about where we are in regards to our improvement, um, process with our, especially on our denied school, Thompson and School, but it also covers the three other schools, um, Armstrong, With, and Bushall. We have just completed the fifth of eight technical assistance trainings, um, that meet the requirements for unpacking the standard, standard student learning objectives and formative assessment. Technical assistance for equitable, equitable distribution and placement of students with disability to ensure increased access to the, um, general curriculum. That training has been scheduled, there will be a series of webinars begins April seventeenth. Um, at this time, we are planning for the state contractors to come in and do, conduct an academic review for federal graduation rate, I mean, um, excuse me, state GCI on March thirtieth and thirty-first. This will take place at Armstrong and With, neither one of the, those schools, um, made the graduation benchmark. Um, Hugh and I also did not make the graduation benchmark in that school, we'll have an academic review as well, and there will be a follow-up at John Marshall. And we are meeting tomorrow with this, the, the high school principals are meeting with me tomorrow, and going over the documentation and what they need to have in place for that review on the thirtieth and thirty-first of this month. And we are awaiting the state audit report, the, um, the date that was scheduled was a snow day, and we have yet to get that rescheduled with the state, and that is where we are.
Okay, thank you very much.
The next item is your added item, seven point zero four, receive an update on the bell schedule.
Good evening, Chairman Coleman, members of the school board. I appreciate the opportunity to come forward tonight and share a few thoughts, maybe refresher from the, uh, Friday, weekly reports that you received, February thirteenth, twentieth, and then just a quick reminder last weekend as well. Last spring, one of the first act, actions that I did as executive director of secondary schools was stand before the board and present the work of a subgroup that spent a lot of time and energy developing a new middle school bell schedule. And we did, in fact, with your approval of that bell schedule last year, we did adopt that, and it is currently in practice. The impacts of that were shared on Friday, uh, Friday, February twentieth. Uh, there was a question after the thirteenth, there was a very small item placed in the weekly report that said there was some concerns about that schedule, uh, and that they'd be coming forward with that. A board member sent a number of questions. We responded to those questions, and you have those questions and the answers before you. To quickly summarize, the questions were how many teachers, non-core teachers are underutilized. And if you recall what we did last year, um, middle school schedules over a two-day period had eight periods, so four one day, four day A, four day B, so they had eight classes. And students then would take math, you know, their core classes, and then they would take their electives. And as it worked out, they, they would have fifty percent of the students could take fifty electives, fifty percent elective, fifty percent core classes. What this board required with the new schedule was that all students double-block math, science, social studies, and English. So we also went to a five-period A-day, five-period B-day, so now we have ten periods over two days. Effectively, what that did was go from where students, all students on paper should be able to take fifty elective, fifty core, to where all students should be able to take twenty elective and eighty percent core classes of the ten periods. The impact that that's had on our master schedule for the, the current year, you recall back in the, uh, in late summer, uh, Dr. Ben came to and requested additional staffing to help cover the core classes because our core classes were overloaded by this new schedule. And as we looked into it further, our elective teachers are under, underutilized, uh, teaching maybe sixty percent of the time rather than eighty percent of the time which the core class teachers are doing. So we are, this is negatively impacting students' options to take, um, to take elective courses. Uh, it also requires students, regardless of the level of their academic ability, they are required to be double-blocked. Uh, and remember, you, this was required of all schools except for Brown and Franklin Wilder, I think, were the only ones that were set aside. So there are a number of concerns, there's, there is financial impact. If you put in some very conservative numbers, you see that conservatively it would be about an eight-hundred, six-thousand-dollar increase by just looking at pure underutilization of faculty members, and also by having to add the core teachers into, uh, account for those additions. So, uh, currently, we are in the process of, of completing student registrations for the twenty-fourteen, or twenty-fifteen, sixteen school year. Student registrations drive our master schedule, they drive a leveling that we're working on, working towards now. And if students, currently, middle school students can sign up for a maximum of two electives, and if we were freed from this constraint, then we would, um, have students signing up for more electives. Uh, and then we, as we level our classes, we'd have a better picture of how many classes students would be taking. So that's just a quick sketch, you have multiple examples that were provided to you. Uh, if you take a look at that document that was sent to you, again, on, uh, with the weekly report dated Friday, the twentieth of February. Thank you.
I just have a quick question. What's your deadline? Do you need us to vote on anything, and what's your recommendation?
This was, this was placed forward in the February date because registration starts in February and will conclude, the goal is that we conclude our student registration course request by the end of March. And so we would like to, uh, and students will always put down option A, B, and C, so, you know, this is my first choice, my second, and sometimes third choice. So, um, we would need a decision made, or if you follow our, what we're looking for for staffing, we're hoping to have everything leveled and balanced, um, during the month of April. So we need to have a decision to let our counselors, make our counselors aware, because right now they're assuming the same middle school schedule for next year. Uh, so I would, I would recommend that some sort of, um, a release from the, from constraint that, you know, that, that the schedule is placed on us, um, and allow the middle school schedules to work with, uh, middle school principals to work together to build the most effective student schedule.
Okay, I'd like to make that motion if you want to entertain it.
We can entertain it.
Um, that we relieve the burden of these, um, double-blocking schedules and allow, um, Mr. Jeffers and the principals to decide on which schedules work best for the students.
Move to second. Any discussion? The steps.
Mr. Jeffers, I want to make sure that I understand. Are, are we saying that the students don't have access to electives because of this schedule we're using?
Absolutely.
Have we ever given any consideration to using some of our partners, um, through some of the after-school programming to allow children to pick up those electives?
That has been what we've done. Some students this year, the only way they can have gotten electives would be through our after-school programs. The after-school program serving from eighty to about a hundred and twenty students at maximum being for schools. So you are limited access to the elective, uh, to the elective opportunities for those students that do choose and are able to stay after school. But we have a lot, a good number of after-school programs that students can participate in.
Okay, and then finally, if I may, um, the schedule, I just want to make sure I understand this, and Lucille Brown, my grandson, he's limited to one elective because he's in the IB program. So are we talking about changing it for the, uh, IB program as well to all, to allow children opportunity to have access? Now that we're going with full IB schools, will those children, will we encounter that problem?
Mr. Coleman, so, so the way I'd respond to that question is that, um... Yeah, the mo, yeah, the motion, uh, as understood was to free the constraint and, and the stipulation to build a schedule that most, uh, works most for our students. And so, IB, the IB program, that would be a constraint they would operate within to build their best schedule for the students at Brown.
So they may have the benefit of this opportunity as well, is what I'm hearing you say?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, uh, still, follow up on Mr. Moore.
I guess as a point of clarity, um, the middle school schedule, which is what we were mimicking from Bedford Middle School's model, is that just, again, just for the middle school level or for secondary as a whole that you want to make revisions to?
Uh, the middle school schedule only is the one that, that was, the constraints were placed on. Currently, the high school schedule does not have a, you will have, it has to be a particular way, and so, uh, as those constraints weren't placed on there, we were, you know, we're glad that those constraints are not there, and we hope that they, those constraints will be left from the high school schedule.
And secondly, um, excuse me, um, I know we talked about this in depth, um, last year. I had a great deal of concerns about double-blocking, um, but you all stated that this has been in place at Bedford Middle School for about three years.
Correct.
And we're comfortable with it in four. So I guess what I'm asking is to my colleagues to possibly make a friendly amendment to the motion. Excuse me. If the administration could, again, make recommendations as to how you want to move forward, and then it come before the board, I think the way it was worded, it seemed like you were looking for them to, um, to make a decision and just move forward with it, but, um, I'm asking that whatever is recommendations they come up with, they write that back to the board for, um, final approval before we move forward. If you're okay with that, friendly amendment?
This is the recommendation. Are you asking for a different recommendation?
Correct. I think, um, in consideration of the timeliness and the fact that they're having to solidify schedules in April, we need to go ahead and allow them the leeway. I think, um, I don't, I don't want to amend the motion to make them have to come back. I think allowing them flexibility has... I think allowing them flexibility has the education leadership within the district is the right thing to do.
I guess I...
Okay. Ms. Coleman.
I guess my concern is I didn't get clarity as to what the schedule was. I couldn't make out everything that you were saying. What is exactly that you want to put in place?
Well, we can, be happy to put some more in the weekly report, but what we're asking is that the constraints be removed from the schedule so that the middle school principals could build our schedules appropriate to the needs of our school.
So it'd be different for building?
Well, I think we have to have consistency from building to building to some extent and the middle school principals have been in conversation. We, there is, we have looked at a couple of different options that would allow us to take more electives, at least have three electives instead of one or two electives. And so we would proceed in that manner.
But you haven't finalized?
No, there wouldn't, we wouldn't have a, this is the middle school schedule for any school, but they would be operating within those same parameters. So there might be students, there might be a justifiable reason to double-block, for instance, a math class for a student. But we would not require all students to double-block. So instead of having ten sections of double-block math, you might have two sections of double-block math. And only the students really in need of that, that the evidence that would support that would be the ones in fact accessing that rather than required. But as far as what that would look like, you would still be having the periods instead of being a seventy-minute period for five periods would be more like eighty-one minutes for, for the five periods. So you'd have a slight adjustment in there. You also recall from the academic improvement plan, we're asking our principals to build in intervention, intervention enrichment time into the school schedule. So what exactly that would look like and what would work from their buildings, that also would vary. But we have constraints, the current constraint would prevent us from building that into our schedule because now it's a very rigid, you'll have this. So there's not something we necessarily bring back, it's, we're going to build a schedule that would work for our students and our students.
Okay, I guess I understood that, I just didn't, I guess in regard to my friendly amendment, is that I'm still not hearing specifics, that this is definitively what it's going to be because conversations still need to be had. And that's why, because it has caused so much turmoil throughout our district over this past year, I would just feel more comfortable with knowing so that I can speak, articulate to my constituency exactly what it's going to look like. And that way, that communication will still go back and forth between the administration and the board and we'll know how to speak to the changes that are going to be made after the fact. And we'll have a chance to be proactive with how our middle school schedules because it's such a taxing environment, especially as it relates to NOK and Thompson and things of that sorts. So many of our schools are in, in a dire state. And I think that we need to know specifically what that looks like before we just give them a carve-out to move forward with that, so.
Okay, Ms. Taylor, you have thirty seconds. You want to use that because that would be your final opportunity?
I'm still waiting. In lieu of the fact that I'm still not hearing specifics, I would still like to make the friendly amendment for the administration to come back to the board before we lock into...
All right, once again, Ms. Gray.
I don't, I think it takes it too far out to own the timeline.
All right, thank you.
Okay, then if that's the case, then I'd like to make a second, a motion to...
Ms. Taylor, Ms. Taylor. Hold on a second. All right. Mr. Moore.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. One, Ms. Kane, Mr. Jeffers, I suspect that whatever schedule works broadly for middle schools, that it will address one of the benefits that I saw in the double-blocking, which is that remediation time and that extra support for those students that might need it.
Right. So the schedule that we're talking about will allow for exactly that, allows for remediation time built into the school day, but it still allows for electives and enrichment for students who are able to do that. But it does give children even with remediation classes an opportunity to take a foreign language or an art or, or something that they're interested in. It just opens the, the schedule up for them. So nobody's going to lose if they need to be in a remediation class, nobody's going to lose, that's not taken away. But if they don't need to be double-blocked, it opens up that schedule for them so that they can participate in some other things.
And so what I, what I hear the process from your end being is you get with the middle school principals, you talk about parameters, principles, ideals that will drive developing the schedule, and then you'll build it so that it's the best option across the board, gives some autonomy to tweak it a little bit for, for different schools. But then, once that plan is developed, I presume that either in a Friday report or in one of our board meetings where we're discussing the academic improvement plan or prior to, you all would tell us, here's what every middle school principal and the academic team came up with as far as our schedule.
Absolutely. And what we're talking about has been vetted through the middle school principals.
Ms. Mohammed.
Um, just having some challenges with this microphone. I fully understand the sense of urgency that we have and I understand my colleagues' heartburn in terms of, say it, that's what I'm saying. Heartburn in terms of the timing and the scheduling, things like that. But I, you know, I can't sit here and not, as a professional, comment on the importance of having these schedules prepared, having the schedules in some type of order to kids because in the past, if you all remember, when we first got on the board, schedules was an issue. Getting the SOL scores was an issue. They weren't getting the scores, let's say they were being, they were testing in May, okay? They weren't getting the scores until September. So we were committed to changing how that functioned a little bit. So because, because I know the importance of having these schedules, having some type of schedule before kids go home and knowing that some of the classes that the kids are taking in middle school are for high school credit, so that means they will have to take an SOL test, which means if they have to expedite, I mean, you know, that, their child's schedule is on hold because of whatever could be. So, you know, I, I don't think, it wouldn't sit well with me having you all come back with something else, knowing in my mind the ripple effect that's going to cause with not just counselors, that's not my concern, I'm talking about students and those tests that, we have a lot of middle school students taking high school courses for high school credit. So, and my daughter got caught up in that, that's why I can speak to it as a professional and, and as a parent. So I, I would not, it would sit well with me to say, come back, give us whatever, and then let's move forward. I don't think that's going to really work. And I'm just, I'm really pleading with you all to allow them to move forward so they can do, so this can be the year that, that we have our schedules in some type of order for all of our kids that receive a schedule. And that will be sixth, grade six through twelve.
Dr. Jones.
Just a quick clarifying question. You would not, you would not have the time, and I'm talking about Ms. Taylor's suggestion, between now and SOL testing to bring that back before us? That, that's, I just want to be clear, that's what you're saying.
Correct. Time is of the essence because we should be a little bit further ahead than we already are. So we sort of mapped out the year for us so that we could send each child home with a schedule, recognizing that there may be an elective here or there that has to change. But they know their core content area, we know what staffing allocations we need at the schools, which is a piece that has been missing. So the longer we put this off, the more likely it is that we're going to end up in the same situation that we were in the beginning of this school.
Can, can we put processes in place so we don't find ourselves under the gun this time for the next time around?
We absolutely can.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, timekeeper, how much time does Ms. Taylor have?
A minute and thirty-one seconds. That's wonderful. I just wanted to say that it's impossible for you all to move forward with your planning and still bring it back. I don't, I don't see why one can delay the other. I mean, you can still move forward with your plans of actions, but to just bring it back to the board just so that we'll know and be able to communicate effectively, is, is there a reason why one will block or stop the other one from happening?
So what we're happy to do is we can certainly provide, if it is information that you're looking for, we'll provide that. We'll provide that proposed schedule for you in the weekly report and that way you get it at the end of this week and we're not subject to waiting two more weeks and putting things on hold. We can continue moving forward and you still get the information that you need.
Okay, yeah, because my biggest concern is about implementation and because of what has happened this past year, it's concerning for me. So having that in a timely fashion so that at least we will have the opportunity to come forward and say, hey, we don't like the way this is going, we want you to make some changes. So that's, that suffices.
I, I could, I thought that it was included in one of the weekly reports in the end of February, but if it wasn't in there, we'll make sure that it gets in there and then we can just continue to move ahead.
That sounds good to me. Thank you.
Okay, no more discussion. Madam Clerk.
The motion was made by Ms. Gray and seconded by Mr. Moore to relieve the administration of current scheduling requirements and allow the director of secondary education along with principals to decide on schedules that are most effective for our students or for IPS students, that's all right. Mr. Sternman.
This is on Ms. Gray's motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mrs. Taylor?
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney-Abbs?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Motion passes, you name it. The next item is item eight, your items for action, eight point zero one, Mr. Moore. Confirm school board approval FY15, '16 budget and the FY16, '20 CIP budgets.
Mr. Chairman, school board members and coworkers and guests, we have a, handout, this is just giving you the numbers at the last, on the board meeting on the third, you approved the budget by deducting two items, four professional days and the charter school, million eighty thousand. And what this document is doing is giving you the bottom line, which explicitly saying, here's what you approved. And on the first page of this report, there's a matrix of all funds and it's showing you that the total of the requests that we submitted to the city is for three hundred and seventy-seven million nine hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. And this is for all funds, including the funds for the Maggie Walker Governor's School and the Mass Science Center, which you are the fiscal agents. So this is requesting appropriation authority for all of these funds. The only, and you'll see by the balance column on the far right, that the only fund that has an offset is the general fund. All the other funds are self-balancing and the revenue minus expenditures in those are zero. So there's no local funds going to those funds, but we do need the appropriation authority to spend those funds. So the bottom line there is three, what you approved implicitly was three seventy-seven nine eighty, four fifty. And on the CIP, which is the next page, because it's a five-year program, we've talked about publicly, the thirty-six million in next year, fiscal sixteen, the thirty-six million five thirty-five, four thirty-four, but it's a five-year plan and the sum of those five years is sixty-two million six thirty-three, eight oh five. And then the detail of that thirty-six million was laid out in the sheets that you've seen from Mr. Krantz before on the capital projects plan. So this is just giving you the explicit concrete components of what you approved. Asking you to confirm that and unless you have questions, that's my presentation.
Okay. Same motion to receive and confirm. Question, Mr. Westman?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Westman, does this information take out the numbers for L-CAR?
No. You mean in the CIP component?
The CIP component of it.
Yeah, I'll defer to Mr. Krantz on that.
I think, I think we'd already approved the CIP by the time...
Before that actually.
Before that actually happened.
And so does it make sense to take the numbers out?
No, not, not at this point. We're going to have another chance to amend this in the process.
Okay.
Ultimately, when the council comes back and affirms your ex money to you, then you'll have to go through an adoption process and adopt the final version.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you for that clarity, Mr. Moore.
No problem, Sebs. I'm moving, we confirm the school board approved FY15, '16 budget and FY16, '20 CIP budget.
Second. The motion was made by Mr. Moore and I heard Dr. Jones first on second, Mr. Sternman?
No.
I'm sorry.
No.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney-Abbs?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes, you name it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Westman.
The next item is to receive for action the recommended Metropolitan Preparatory Academy charter school, and we do have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Pinkney-Abbs that was seconded by Ms. Harris Mohammed to grant conditional approval of the Metropolitan Preparatory Academy. I'm sorry. It needs to be removed from the table.
The matter was laid on the table earlier, so you need to make a motion to remove the matter from the table and, and deal with your original motion. So again, I'm not, I'm not, no, you must do the discussion, of course. I'm not in no tricks.
I'll remove it.
It needs a second. It needs a second, Ms. Pinkney-Abbs, to remove it.
A second.
I'm sorry. Mr. Sternman?
This is to withdraw the motion that was tabled.
It's to remove it from the table. Bring it back from the table.
This is a, this is a withdrawing motion.
Is, probably not your purpose, Chair.
Ms. Moore.
I'm just asking if it might be a simpler process to just leave it on the table and make a new motion. Can we just leave the motion on the table and just make a new motion? So it just gets left on the table and therefore it dies by virtue of the process? Is that possible?
I suppose it's possible. My only discussion point was that in order to discuss our original motion, that needed to be brought back because that was laid on the table.
But if there was, if there were a new motion, we wouldn't need to discuss the old motion, right?
But that's true. You can write, but now there's a motion and a second to remove from the table.
Okay. Thank you so much.
To remove?
To remove from the table.
From the table. Ms. Pinkney-Abbs made the motion, Mr. Sternman seconded. Mr. Sternman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Pinkney-Abbs?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
And Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes, you name it.
Okay, Ms. Heps.
There is a motion, now that you've removed, excuse me, now that you've taken it from the table, your original motion, which was the motion that was moved by you and seconded by Ms. Harris Mohammed to grant the conditional approval, is at play. So if you do not wish that motion to stay alive, you need to withdraw it.
No, I want that motion to stay alive. Can I amend it?
It could be amended, yes.
Okay. Taking into consideration what Ms. Larson wanted to discuss, wanted to add in her friendly amendment, can we agree that items two, three, and four, that was suggested by Ms. Larson, be added to this amendment with, with the date of October 1, 2015?
So then your motion would read to grant conditional approval of the Metropolitan Preparatory Academy Charter School contingent upon finding a location by January two thousand sixteen to open in the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year and also for the school to have sufficient evidence of students enrolled within plus or minus ten percent of goal for the first year of operation and for a detailed plan and related finances for executing exception, exceptional education services and a detailed plan related to finances on transportation by October first of two thousand and fifteen.
Correct.
No. I don't think so because that'll, that would require them to have sufficient evidence of students enrolled within plus or minus ten percent by October one, two thousand and fifteen. Ms. Larson's proposed amendment is March one, two thousand and sixteen, so basically a year from now.
So what should the date be? What sounds like a reasonable date?
Ms. Larson?
Can you read the first part of the amendment?
The first part of the motion or the first part of the amendment?
I'm sorry, the first part of the motion. The motion is to grant conditional approval of the Metropolitan Preparatory Academy Charter School contingent upon finding a location by January two thousand sixteen to open in the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year. I'm still in the same place with that language that I was when we discussed this before, that I, I can't get behind the January first. I mean, I need some sort of update by August third, two thousand and fifteen. I'd be willing to bend a little bit on having the lease or purchase agreement by the first of October, but, but I need some sort of facilities plan in front of us by August third. And I'd also like to add ELL to the exceptional N and ELL service. So that's where I am personally. If you want to accept that as a friendly amendment, that'd be great. This is something I, I talked about mostly with Tanya. If, if not, then I'll, we'll see how this vote rolls and I'll put forward my own motion if this one doesn't pass.
Fantastic. So let me state the motion correctly, if I may. Keep the first part. With items two, three, and four, that Ms. Larson suggests they are doable, regarding item number one, securing the space, we'd be willing to move that date up to October one, two thousand and fifteen?
She's suggesting first part of your motion.
Yes.
So finding a location by October one, two thousand and fifteen?
Yes. And adding the language from two, three, and four with regard to Ms. Larson's suggestions. And that would be my amendment, whether or not she agrees with it.
I was gonna suggest that you would be fine with that amendment if there was also a requirement that Metro Prep come on August third, or, yeah, with a plan for securing the facility and with a lease to be a place for that facility by October one. Yes?
That's correct, and I would also like-
That's what they agreed with.
I'd also like the language that I wrote out because it talks about compliance, it being a public school building, which includes access issues and all those kinds of things.
My motion is amended as I just made it.
So does that include the language in number one of Ms. Larson's email that she's in her own?
That's good. That's good.
That's good, okay. So it, the, the motion will be approved with all of the conditions in Ms. Larson's email, except rather than requiring them to have a lease on August third, we will require them to come and report on their plan for getting the lease on August third and then they have to have the lease by October first.
That's true.
Okay.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Okay, so the new motion is to grant conditional approval of the Metropolitan Preparatory Academy Charter School contingent upon providing a facilities plan to the school board by August third and securing a location by October one of two thousand and fifteen and that the school has sufficient evidence of students enrolled within ten percent of the goal for the first year of operation by March first, two thousand and sixteen and also by August third, two thousand and fifteen, a detailed plan and related finances for executing exceptional education and ELL services and a detailed plan and related finances on transportation.
Okay.
I'm so sorry to be in the pinky, but, but I, I added some language that said the facility, if not within RPS school system, must comply with all public school requirements. If the facility is, is an RPS facility, the charter board must submit a reasonable timeline for evidence, for renovations and evidence and financial, financial backing to make those renovations.
And so the motion was made by Ms. Pinkney Apps, so the amendment, my-
Well, our cost management, what is the schedule management plan?
Ms. Epps, were you withdrawing your original motion to substitute this particular motion?
Yes.
All right, and so with this particular motion, are you agreeing to what Ms. Larson just indicated with respect to the facility requirements? That is correct. Okay, but that the plan still has to be here by August the, August the third with, it finalized by October the first for facilities, with the language that Ms. Larson had in her? All right. So by August third, the board, charter applicant will provide an update as to the facilities plan and by October first, the school will secure a sufficient school facility as evidenced by submitting a lease or purchase, all of that? Okay. Yes, for the record, Mr. Born?
Yes, I, I just want, I just, I just want to be clear, I want to be able to understand, do you all understand what this motion means?
Yes.
I, I just, I just want to know because it, to me, it doesn't sound like what you think it should say. So if you all are clear, then they're gonna roll with it. But it doesn't sound to me like what you want it to say because it, it just doesn't sound right. So if you're good with it, then they're gonna, they're gonna roll with it. I just want to make sure you're clear on what they're asking you to do.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
School contingent upon the charter applicant providing a facilities plan to the school board by August third, two thousand and fifteen and by October one, two thousand and fifteen, the school will secure sufficient school facility as evidenced by submitting a lease or purchase agreement to the RPS board. The facility, if it is not within RPS school system, must comply with all public school requirements. If the facility is an RPS facility, the charter board must submit a reasonable timeline for renovations and evidence of financial backing to make those renovations. By March one, two thousand and sixteen, the school has sufficient evidence of students enrolled within ten percent of goal for the first year of operation. By August third, two thousand and fifteen, a detailed plan and related finances for executing exceptional, exceptional education and ELL services and by August third, two thousand and fifteen, a detailed plan related to finances on transportation. And motion was made by Ms. Pinkney Apps, seconded by Ms. Taylor. Mr. Sternman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
No.
Mr. Born?
No.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Come back to the room.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney Apps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion passes, six, uh, two nays and one abstention.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
The next item is to receive for action an alternative accreditation plan for Amelia Street and Richmond, I'm sorry, and Rams.
Richmond Alternative School.
Good evening, we are here to request board approval for the submission of an alternative accreditation plan for two special schools in the RPS system, Richmond Alternative School and Amelia Street. As noted in last week's weekly report, an alternative accreditation plan allows for special purpose schools such as these for special education and alternative education to be evaluated for accreditation on standards appropriate to the programs that those schools provide. And we have provided in the board packet for tonight, the index model for the additional points that can be added to the standards performance for those schools in order for them to meet accreditation under an alternative plan. And so we are here, we worked on those proposals together in order to bring this to you tonight.
Ms. Epps?
Couple of quick questions. In here it says that the children are at the alternative school for a minimum of ninety days. How many students actually make that benchmark? Don't, aren't we keep them there longer than that?
So the students, good evening, the students have to progress through the level system. If you remember, on last year, we changed the duration of a student's time at Richmond Alternative. Previously, they had to be there for a hundred and eighty days of school attendance regardless of whether they made improvement or not. We wanted to modify that process such that if students were able to demonstrate pro-social behaviors appropriate for the school setting, they could return and weren't bound by a specific date. So at the end of each marking period, students are reviewed to determine if they've met the status of level four to be transitioned back to their comprehensive school and that process looks at attendance, grades, and it also looks primarily at behavior in that they are able to conduct themselves according to our standards of conduct.
And that information is written in item number three. The response. Does it include in here the numbers of the students who are exceeding that ninety day stay?
It does not include that information there, but we can give you some updates in terms of how many students were transitioned by quarter. But again, it takes some students a longer period of time to again, get to that level of place where they can demonstrate themselves that they're gonna behave in accordance to our student code of responsible ethics.
And it is in the index model for the school to receive points on successful transition back to their own school. And then finally, this, where it says the grade served are six through eleven and the twelfth graders graduate from their own school, so we don't have any twelfth graders between this year and last year that were assigned to this alternative school.
Yeah. Richmond Alternative, as a school of record, only supports through grade eleven. Student turn in grade twelve, they may be there for a portion of their senior year, but Richmond Alternative does not graduate any students. And so I may have attended Richmond Alternative for a portion of my year, but I graduated from my own school, so John Marshall, Armstrong, et cetera. So as a school of record, they only support grades six through eleven.
Okay, I'm not sure I get it, but I can ask some more questions.
Okay, Ms., all right, thank you, Ms. Epps, Ms. Larson.
I move that we approve the administration's recommendation for an alternative accreditation plan for Amelia Street and Rams.
Moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Sternman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
No.
Mrs. Taylor?
No.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney Apps?
No.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven, two.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Next item is to receive for action proposed revisions to policies one dash two five compensation and expenses and one dash five point eight school board travel of the policy man.
Okay, colleagues, this item has, is returned because the last time we had it and there was a tie. We want to be very strict on our comments at this point. To move us along, we have extended closed session. It is now nine forty. We have discussed this item on several occasions, so this time, give us an opportunity. Ms. Lilly will refresh us and then Ms. Taylor, I saw your hand.
Basically, I just wanted to bring your attention that I, in an effort to help, I took the conversation that you all had the last time and that's what you have in your draft that's in front of you with respect to the travel policies. So that's why you only see the one and you will notice that the appendix has been included to show you what the state guidelines are on those two areas.
Question? Okay, well, Ms. Taylor, any question first?
Okay, my question number one is, at our last school board meeting, you directed Ms. Lilly to look into the first motion that was- So, um, that's why you only see the one. Um, and you will notice that the appendix has been included to show you what the state guidelines are on those two areas.
Question? Okay, well, um, Ms. Taylor, any question first?
Okay, um, my question number one is, um, at our last school board meeting, you directed Ms. Lily to look into the first motion that was made, and I was wondering. You walked up. Okay, um, you directed, um, she went here since she was interested in the question. Um, you directed Ms. Lily to look into the matter of the first motion that came forward with a split vote, um, about three board meetings ago, that when we came to the second. Time to address that. The meeting was adjourned, and I was just wondering, were you able to gather any data on that? That's question one.
At the last meeting, I thought that was resolved because we, I said that the issue could come back up again, and I did not take any further action. I did not realize that was directed towards means of research. Um, so the issue still is that even if it was a tie vote, it didn't come back the next meeting, it did, as I said during the last meeting, um, this issue can still come up as a separate vote. So the clerk to research the records at some point to provide you that answer.
Okay, um, well, it definitely was directed to you to look into the matter. So if you could, and possibly give back to us this week, because that is specifically, um, written to policy, and is our responsibility as board members to make sure that those are implemented, or how can we expect, um, our administrators to honor the policies that we put in place if we don't honor them ourselves? So that was an important thing that we made a policy, I mean, that we made a vote, it was a split vote definitively as on record, and when we got to the very next meeting, that vote wasn't picked up. As, as what we're dealing with now, this was voted on at the last meeting, it was a split vote, and then it was back on the next agenda to be addressed. That was, the first motion wasn't given that opportunity to deal with this split vote.
I will work with the clerk to find that information out, and that's a board issue and not an administrative issue.
Okay.
Okay, that was, that was question number one.
You, you only, again, we're going to be strict at this point because we talked about this issue, so as you just brought to us.
That was, that was separate.
No, 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 I'm giving you your next opportunity. That's our policy. This is your second opportunity. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, then I'll try to, um, put the questions into order. Um, what I'm looking to do is to, two parts of the second question. Address vague correction to a statement that I put on the record last week, and to ask to make a friendly amendment to the motion that's on the floor now. Um, the correction that I need to make from the last board meeting is I spoke to a paper shredder that, um, Ms. Kimberly Gray purchased, um, as being three hundred and fifty-two dollars that came out of, um, travel funds, and the correction is that it was actually three hundred and fifty-six dollars that was used to purchase a paper shredder, um, from travel funds. Um, the friendly reminder. The friendly amendment to the motion that I would like to make is because you're talking about traveling out of town and limited, limiting it to one board member, something that we spoke about through previous discussion as this motion has gone, gone on ad nauseam. Um, there are so many different, um, seminars that use different conferences, and having more than one board member attend.
Time.
Time. It's three members? Okay, if I could just, just complete my third amendment.
Close your door, Ms. Taylor.
Having three members attend when there's so many different activities that we can take, uh, I would think that it would be, uh, a spirit of compromise to find a way for more than one board member to try to, at out of state events, to get more coverage and to be able to bring back more information, similar to the conference that's going on in Nashville with the Chamber of Commerce, you have about a hundred and sixty-five people traveling to that, they'll be able to get a lot of coverage and a lot done. We as a board member have constituents that are looking for information to come back from these meetings, and if there are, say, a hundred, a hundred different sessions, and one person is trying to decipher which ones to go, that limits the amount of information that we'd be, we would be able to. So that's the motion. To alter the policy one dash five point eight, that it doesn't limit us to one person traveling out of town, and that it doesn't limit us to one trip annually. If that can at least extend to the surrounding Virginia area to extend itself to Baltimore, different parts of Maryland, um, Northern Virginia.
Okay, Ms. Taylor. Okay. All right. Mister, uh, the motion, again, that we're bringing back, um, was made by Mr. Sternman. Mr. Sternman, did you hear her request for a friendly amendment?
Uh, yeah. I guess parliamentary question, since it was a tie vote last time, does it not automatically come up for a re-vote? And is that the posture we're at now? Is it a re-vote on this?
That's where we are now, and I wanted to clarify that your motion, as I recall, it was option one as amended, and there were some amendments made to it, and that's what you have in front of you here. Um, there was an amendment for exception for delegates, there was an amendment, um, for in-state, I think in-out-of-state, and then there was the request to add the appendix, and so that's what's before you now.
But I guess my question is, is that automatically before us for a vote?
Yes.
Or does that need to be moved and seconded again?
It's automatically before you for a vote.
So should I just be voting on that now?
Yes, you should be voting on that now. This is, I mean, it can still go, well, you know, it can still go through this.
Okay, so could we read the motion so people can be clear with their votes, please?
Um, the amendment that I made is still on the floor. It's been properly seconded. The amendment that I just made to that motion that has been properly seconded, is that on the floor as well? Teach you there.
Parliamentary inquiry. Thank you, Mr. Born.
If the motion is before us on a purely a procedural matter, having been a tie vote, isn't it just to reconsider that vote?
Reconsider that vote, however, because you have to go again, it's still a bit of a, of a problem.
Well, but it's, but I guess my argument would be it's not another motion. That motion had been made, properly seconded, the discussions had been closed, and it ended on a tie vote, so we need to reconsider that vote. We don't have to go through the motions of actually moving that item, seconding it, discussing it, closing the question. Right?
I, I think that's what Mr. Stern, Mr. Sterns made just asked. I think my answer to that one was yes.
So, so I guess I'm having a hard time understanding how it's in a procedural posture whereby we can amend it.
All right. Let me go back. Last meeting, it was a tie. You're correct. The discussion had ended, the, you know, called, the question was called. It is here, it said it shall pass until the next meeting where it shall be voted upon, um, if all members, whether or not all members are here or not, and so now you're voting on that motion. And...
Who are we voting on that?
You're voting on the motion that was tied.
That had been properly seconded, discussed, and closed.
Correct. Correct. And so I, Ms. Taylor's amendment then becomes, you, we have to take care of the first motion first. The motion that was brought forward just because of the tie vote the last time, we have to take care of that first.
But remember, at the top of the meeting, um, discussion, I opened up with, we were in the situation before. We had, we had a motion and a split vote that came to the next meeting that we was opposed to, as they're asking now, they're asking if we can address the, the motion that was made at the last meeting. And a precedent was set with the first time we went through with a split vote, it never came back to the tables of voting. So if that motion was not readdressed at the next meeting, then how will we give preferential treatment to this motion that was born in the last meeting to be voted on first and foremost?
Someone just let me know what the question.
That was my first motion.
What's the question on the table? Because I want to call it.
There are two questions. There are two questions on the table.
Talking about stuff that is...
Call, call the question on the amendment.
There are two questions on the table, and the one that I made is, excuse me, Jeffrey, excuse me, Jeffrey, excuse me, Jeffrey. Excuse me, Jeffrey. Excuse me, Jeffrey Born, excuse me, Jeffrey Born, you cannot talk over me if you don't mind.
Excuse me, excuse me.
I was, I understand, but I'm in the...
Ms. Taylor and Mr. Born, excuse me. The, Mrs. Lily is trying to answer where we are.
Okay. Um, per twenty-two point one dash seventy-five, procedures in case...
Bless you.
In case of tie votes. In any case in which there is a tie vote, and I'm talking about the tie vote that was in the preceding meeting, um, in this instance, um, in any case where there is a tie vote of the school board of any school division where the members are not present, the question shall be passed until the next meeting, where, when it shall again be voted on, even though all members are not present. And so we have all members here, it shall be voted on again, um, because the, for the procedural posture, and I'm talking about again, this particular question, the question on the floor, you all just need to vote it up or down. It was option one as amended, um, and the amended version is in front of you with the local in-state travel and the out-of-state travel. And actually, it was, and I think you moved both of them together, is that correct? It was one dash two point five and one dash five point eight as amended.
Okay, um...
Point of clarity, it was together.
Okay, at this point, uh...
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
We need to move forward with the vote.
Yeah, I, I called the question on the amendment. Can we, can we vote on the amendment?
There is no amendment. Correct? We have to. Okay, we want to vote amendment up or down.
There we go.
We can do that.
May I have a point of clarity before we go to this vote? Please?
Yes.
Okay. We originally made a motion that tied, it was prior to that.
Okay, let me, let me own that, excuse me.
And we proceeded, we didn't deal with that, and so now we have an opportunity that we're about to vote on something, and we dismissed the original vote.
Excuse me, Ms. Epps. I will, I will own whatever needs to be owned in that, but at the procedural point, Mr. Coleman, whatever that happened, that's on me. Okay? But we, we cannot continue to go around. I take full responsibility for it, and whatever y'all need to do to me about that, fine. But at this point, we're at, we're going to follow the procedure. And our clerk is going to research, and if I didn't follow the procedure last time, you all will have great opportunity to deal with me about that. But at this point, we're going to, we're going to follow the procedure, which requires us to vote at this meeting. So let's be clear on what we're voting on. Thank you so much.
I'm not very clear on the amendment, was it? Mr. Sternman called the question on the amendment. Did you mind calling? Yes, sorry. Mr. Sternman called the question on the amendment, and Ms. Taylor, I'm not really clear on what your amendment is. Could you repeat that for me, please?
Um, the amendment asks that we have more than one board member travel to out-of-state trips. That, um, in regard to traveling more than one time a year, that that be extended to the surrounding Virginia area, the metropolitan area, say Baltimore, Northern Virginia, places that are drivable. And did that not be limited to one board member either?
Okay, I, I didn't hear you that well, but what I have is more than one board member, um, be allowed to travel to out-of-state trips and the travel be extended to places that are drivable and not be limited to one board member. And is there a second on the, um, okay. Ms. Epps made second, um, call the question? Oh, okay. Okay, so Ms. Taylor made the amendment, Ms. Pinkney Epps seconded, and Mr. Sternman has called a question. Is there a second on that?
Second.
No discussion. No discussion, so.
No, you're going to end the discussion. Oh, okay.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Sternman?
Closing the discussion, that was number one. Go ahead. Closing your, you, you said you'd close the discussion.
This is a vote to...
Close the discussion.
Yeah.
Says you asked for it, okay.
Ms. Gray? Yes. Mr. Will?
Yes.
Ms. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman? Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones? Yes. Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
Yes.
And Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
So now the vote is on the amendment made by Ms. Taylor and seconded by Ms. Pinkney Epps, and that was to... Okay. Um, and that was, excuse me, to allow more than one board member to travel out of state, uh, to out-of-state trips and a travel be extended to places that are drivable and that be limited to one board member. Mr. Sternman?
No.
Ms. Gray?
No.
Mr. Will?
No.
Ms. Larson?
No.
Mr. Coleman? Ms. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones? Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
Yes.
And Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
The amendment passes five, four. So now the amendment goes into the original motion, which was to approve option one as amended, and both policies will go down.
No, question? Mr. Born?
You know what, I'm, I'm, I'm going to practice some history.
Thank you, sir.
So are we now voting on the policies as amended by Ms. Taylor's motion then?
Yes.
To, so it's approved, huh?
Yes.
Mr. Sternman?
Somebody move it?
This is, this is a motion.
Well, no, I mean, it's not, it's no longer, it's no longer a policy that I supported, so it's not my motion. I, I supported the policy as amended, uh, as put forward at the last meeting, but not as amended by the last vote.
Then you vote for yours.
Yeah, but I'm, but I'm not putting forward a motion for a policy that I support.
The policy, excuse me, the motion was amended, so it should be the motion as amended by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Ms. Epps.
So we're not breaking a tie vote at this point?
Well, I originally, well, I said before you went through the amendment that you're voting on the original motion. So the amendment...
So procedurally, if we move forward with amending the motion that was on the floor, which just happened, the motion that was a tie vote will never be considered?
That's true.
If this is to now consider approving the policy as was just amended?
Correct.
Procedurally, the motion has been amended. We've had discussion about whether or not there was a, the tie vote and the posture of that. I originally said that, um, or indicated that there was some discussion of that. Then I said, we are here on the tie vote. We had the amendment that went through, so the motion has been amended. And so, the tie, the vote that is on the table, or was on the table, that was brought back, um, is no longer as it stands. And so, the vote is at current for the policy option, well, the entire motion, as I recall, it was the block of one dash two point five and one dash five point eight as amended. Um, and what I'll have to do is, if that passes, is to, there are amendments in here that were made that still will carry through because it was amended. The appendix, the appendix that was attached will be attached, and there will be some work done to, to paragraph of the out-of-state travel to reflect, um, the amendment that Ms. Taylor had. So, the mo, the motion that's on the floor is the policy that's in front of you, the policies that are in front of you for the fifth read draft, um, as amended by Ms. Taylor and seconded by Ms. Epps. And if you agree to that, you vote yes. If you disagree, you vote no.
Mr. Sternman?
No.
Ms. Gray?
No.
Mr. Born?
No.
Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yeah.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes five, four.
Okay, and, um, Madam Attorney, you will get back to what was the, and what has the questions about. Right? Thank you. And clerk?
Eight one zero five, receipt for action of proposed two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen calendar.
Um, Superintendent, has a comment on that?
I believe that calendar was, uh, based on the five days, and probably should table that because you don't have any money to fund it right now. The calendar that was being brought forward was based on your approval, having reducing nine professional development days to five. This calendar is those five days. So, your intention as you brought it forward was for funding to be provided for the five days. So, if you still intend for that to be compensation, then you probably should table, uh, this motion. Or if you approve it, you're gonna, you would end it going forward, saying you're gonna go regardless. But know that at some point, it gets dangerous if we don't make a decision about the calendar because Stan has to make plans and because of what's calendar, which we be on this issue.
So, if I understand...
Dr. Ben, did these, this five days was the original five days that was added without any compensation?
You, you had a calendar that had nine professional, the AIP had nine professional development days. We were asked to, uh, develop, uh, a calendar to fit both that, one with five days, and then we had a regular one. Uh, there was a motion made on the budget you forwarded to reduce that to five days. So effectively, that defaulted to the five-day calendar.
And it has funding attached to it?
Well, that's what you forwarded to the mayor's office. A budget that went forward, proposed by the mayor, currently does not have funds to support those five days. So your choices are to table it and wait till another meeting, or if you forward it, you would be saying this is gonna be our calendar with funding or without, which that is your prerogative at the board, but your intent initially was to have funding. I would say it has to be brought. If you table it, it needs to come back for discussion by the April meeting at the latest because at some point, you gotta make a decision so that people can plan what their work schedule is. Because people start planning their summer breaks and trips, and this calendar effectively has them coming back, starting to work a week earlier than many of them are used to.
Okay.
Okay. Heard the request of Superintendent. Do you wanna move forward with vote or table?
I would, I would like it to be tabled as well, but I just wanted to add the point of, I know I've mentioned this a couple of times, the bike race, because I think we need to fold that into the actual calendar so we know where we are. There are any major traffic disruptions the week of the bike race.
We have voiced our request for information on several occasions. I voiced it directly with the chief of staff of the city, was advised that they would be getting hold of Mr. Krantz. To date, we've not still yet received any official information, so that is a matter of concern. As of today, we discussed it again, that if they plan to run routes, the routes they, we hear they're running in the week of September twenty-first, I believe...
Yes, sir.
Would potentially create a major disruption for our ability to get kids to school on our buses. So then, leadership team's conversation this, this morning was either you're effectively gonna have to start earlier, get the same number of days in, uh, school, which would then still require some interstate approval to see if that qualifies for it, or run later, do some other option because it would be dangerous if we take those five days and then hit winter. So, we're still trying to get an answer definitive from the city, and whether there's any accommodation they'll make to support us at schools. If not, what kind of stuff?
I know that Maggie Walker only is effective about one day of the route, so they're lengthening the school day for a couple of weeks longer. I think they're adding time to the schedule. But with five days, I don't know that we can add that much time into the calendar.
Okay, can I, do we have any consensus around, uh...
Yeah, I was, I just wanted to put that out there because I know...
Okay. Table it to the thirteenth?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
I'm open to table it as well. I just wanted to, um, ask the administration to consider making some alterations in the parent-teacher conference days in the calendar.
You wanna take the calendar to the thirteenth? You wanna speak to the administration off-line?
I just wanted them to prepare on something so that when we come back to the thirteenth, they can already have a response for that. Um, with the parent-teacher conferences, this last, um, session that we had last Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, they were both scheduled from twelve noon to three o'clock, which is when, um, parents are generally working. If we can have some flexibility there. Also, I've been asking for two years if we can find a way to add another day to the calendar to accommodate parents seeing the Saturday, um, so that parents can see how their children are doing because like over this past year, that had been really difficult with Aspen not being in place. Parents are not aware of how their children are performing a lot of...
Okay, Ms. Taylor? Thank you so much. We're gonna, uh, boil the calendar on the, uh, thirteenth, and we're just encouraging you to pursue the administration, get answers, okay?
Okay. Dr. Ben, you got it.
Next item is eight one zero six, receipt for action, human resources actions.
School board members, good evening. I bring for you tonight the HR actions for approval, which include the nomination of three employees, the change of contract of five employees. And actions for information include the resignation of six employees, the retirement of four employees, and the termination of one employee.
I move adoption of the HR actions. Move to the second?
Mr. Sternman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray? Mr. Born? Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones? Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero. The next item is to receive for action, budget transfer.
She has to present.
No, she's good.
If she's good, we see.
She was just there to ask any questions.
I know anyway. They're gonna do the money, so...
No, you can't say. Okay, Madam Attorney.
Mr. Sternman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
Yep.
Mrs. Taylor?
We're voting.
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero. The next item is to...
Just one quick point, those, um, budget transfers are not on board, uh, so if someone can put them up there, that would be good, just for the sake of covering our bases.
Ms. Frank, can you check to see the budget transfers on board?
They kept the log in. The district activities are not on there either. We need to know it.
Do we have any district fund activities?
We do.
Yes.
I would, I would propose that we defer those until such time as we can review the request.
I can, Mr. Born, uh, could we switch these...
There are budget transfers on board. Budget transfers on board. No, there are not. Mr. Coleman?
The one, there is one district request, and, um, that was from separate district representative, uh, Mr. Donald Coleman, is to support the Armstrong High School Choir, uh, has been given an invitation to go to Atlanta, Georgia, and participate in the national choir competition concert, and they are fundraising for that event, and they came to me recently and asked could I help, um, with that. You know, Madam Attorney, clerk here is...
It is one thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars.
I would ask for my colleague's support to get all of them.
We're gonna have to take some time to think about that, so, probably we'll be back on that, so, do you need a response?
Uh, they are fundraising as we speak, and, um, this eighteen hundred would definitely move them towards their goal.
Ms. Epps? Point of clarity, I guess, uh, Mr. Coleman, you know I would not reproach you anything. Um, but does this request coincide with what this funding is used for? Will it go, I mean, how will that transfer happen? Will it actually go to the foundation to then be moved forward? I mean, it's, is it funding children?
Yes, it's funding the choir, right.
But as I understood, we could make requests to use our funding in that way. Am I, so I just would like some clarity on that.
Mr. Coleman, is this going to the school?
It benefits the students, that's why the students are, by its constituents, it's benefiting the students.
Mr. Coleman, this going, this going to, and I, and I was being calm for a little bit about, you know, we need to know today. Um, but isn't it going with, with things are funded like this, they go through the profitable financial channels of the schools? It's not going directly to the sponsor because it has to go to wherever they're going to?
Yeah, we're gonna follow...
Um, your policy on compensation and expenses talks about, um, there was a prohibition on, um, donating to an individual, but their allocations can be made to specific programs and a project, at any, projects at any school within the school division that's consistent with the goals and objectives of the school board. Um, and another option is to allocate to the foundation, but it can go to a program, it just cannot go to the specific individual. I'm, I'm good with that, thank you.
Okay, so, Dr. Ben?
What I would suggest is that, um, requests can be made, and then they do a budget transfer into the school's account to do that, which would keep it clean to get to your question. So, if you approve it, they could then just transfer it from one budget code to the other, designate it to be used for that, and that way, that, that'd keep a tracking mechanism, that's to keep it specific to the organization and the purpose outline, so it's easy to track and record it for that point.
Great, thanks, Dr. Ben.
And they're gonna know, I'm sorry, and they're gonna know when they, when the specific code, so it won't be an issue, you know, when the sponsor asks, was something paid or wasn't paid, and then someone says, or would know that money went to where else. It's gonna be specifically stated, correct?
Yes, ma'am. When they do the budget transfer, they can create notes, and it specifies its use, and or if we have a concern, we could just pay the bill directly, if that's the one which is even cleaner. Some cases, they may have to take a pot of money together. So if it's gonna be paid directly, we'll go ahead and pay it, makes it even cleaner. If it has to go into that activity account, they can note on the transfer what it's specifically for.
I move that we approve the request for the eighteen hundred dollar transfer from Mr. Coleman's travel budget to the school activities fund, or whatever appropriate budget line, um, to help fund the Armstrong Choir's trip to Atlanta.
Madam Clerk, Mr. Sternman? Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman? Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Har, Mrs. Harris Mohammed? Dr. Jones? Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Born? Thank you, motion passes nine zero. Um, the next item is consent agenda, and I just ask that you approve the minutes of the minutes. So, all in favor? Any votes and abstentions? Thank you for passing the minutes. The next item is new business.
Ms. Mohammed?
I just wanted to, um, remind everyone that the next act, too, is March the twenty-sixth at Armstrong, then the one after that is April the sixteen, and the teacher appreciation day is May first.
That is not good.
Thank you very much. Okay, Madam Clerk?
The next item is closed, and Mr. Born has the chief. The next item is closed, and Mr. Born has the chief. Motion was made by Mr. Born, seconded by Mr. Sternman. All in favor? I oppose any abstentions, you are now enclosed.
The county across the hall, colleagues.